The Cuyahoga County Committee of the whole meeting for Tuesday, July 18th is now called to order. Andrea, would you please call the roll?
Good afternoon, everyone. It is now 1:11 PM. As a reminder to all in attendance, this meeting is being recorded and livestreamed on the county's YouTube page. Calling the roll, Mr. Tuma.
Here.
Mr. Gallagher. Mr. Schron.
Here.
Ms. Conwell.
Present.
Ms. Turner. Ms. Turner is absent. Ms. Stevens. Ms. Stevens is absent at the moment. Ms. Simon. I did see Ms. Simon. Mr. Kelly.
Here.
Mr. Miller.
Present.
Mr. Sweeney.
Present.
Council President Jones.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you, Andrea. Has anyone signed in for public comment?
Yes, the first public comment, Terry Joyce.
Mr. President, thanks for having me today to the council. I'm here to speak on the proposed jail.
Mr. Joyce, if you could state your name for the record, please?
My apologies. Terrence P. Joyce, Business Manager, Labor's Local 310, here in Cleveland, Ohio. So through the president, to the board, to the council, here to speak on the proposed jail, knowing what a difficult decision that is for you all and for the residents of Cuyahoga County. From a building trade standpoint, we're happy to tell you now that work is great and work is strong. Myself and Dave Wandelowski just had this conversation two days ago. It's pretty timely. We only can keep the momentum going though when both public and private are doing work in our town. So we all know about Sherwin-Williams and the upcoming work with Gilbert and the Bedrock people and numerous other sites throughout the town, but we would really like to see the county move forward with the jail. We are also so very proud to tell you that our arms couldn't be held out any wider to the residents of our community. We are actively looking for people under every rock, under every stone, through every community group, and we would love to see this just keep the momentum going in this town, to keep our residents of Cuyahoga County working and to see the county move into the next phase of unfortunately incarcerating some people that we wish didn't have to be in there, but we all know that we need this facility. We need to get out of the old and we'd appreciate your due diligence and your deliberation on this very tough matter for, I know you, but selfishly speaking for the trades, we would love to see this to keep this town moving. So thank you for your consideration.
Dave Wandelowski.
Good afternoon, members of council. Dave Wandelowski, Executive Secretary and Business Manager for the Cleveland Building Trades Council. On behalf of the Cleveland Building and Construction Trades Council, we enthusiastically support the plan to build a new jail on the Garfield site at Transportation Boulevard. We also support the sales tax extension to fund it. There is not another public building that exists anywhere to my knowledge where over a dozen people have lost their lives in individual situations. If this would have happened anywhere else, there would be public outrage and cries for reform. And in any other institution, there would have been a sense of urgency. This isn't about creating a luxurious life in prison. It's about basic human decency. Now is the opportunity to get it right here in Cuyahoga County. Many people being held in that building haven't been convicted of a crime. They haven't even seen the inside of a courtroom yet. And even if they've been convicted, they're still members of our community and they deserve humane treatment. They and their loved ones deserve better. We, the taxpayers, deserve better. We need to be assured that we have a high standard for the people we are detaining. We cannot continue down the road of expensive settlements to avoid litigation with tax dollars. We will never build this jail for the cost that we can build it for right now. Prices are continuing to rise each and every month we wait, and in doing so, we, the taxpayers, will pay more. So the time to act is now. We have a clean, safe site. It's ready to go. Please don't put this off any longer. Thank you.
Ron Jackson.
Good afternoon, council. How you doing? Ron Jackson, presently, I used to live on a street called Rollins Avenue. It's in the Forgotten Triangle. Opportunity Corridor runs right through my living room in the house that I grew up in. When this road was built, there was some talk about building the new jail site on Opportunity Corridor. That would be a generational change for that neighborhood. It has been forgotten for years and years. I want to suggest that the new jail facility is built on Opportunity Corridor. Thank you.
Kareem Hinton.
Good afternoon, members of council. My name is Kareem Hinton. I am a founding member of the Cleveland Chapter of Black Lives Matter Cleveland. I am here today to first express that I am extremely impressed with the fact that we've had some influential members of our community come up and express concern about humanity in the jail. I hope that that will continue as people continue to die, as has happened as of yesterday, and as we seek to do what is truly humane when we try to employ services that will actually keep people from even having to come into the jail, providing services that will help people, rather preventative measures. What I really want to, so I really wanted to make that a point, but what I really, really, really need to say to you all is this. Einstein said that doing the same thing over and over again, but expecting a different outcome is the definition of insanity. And I see insanity beginning to happen here, and that is because when the purchase or the attempted purchase of the site on transport happened, there was a contingency agreement that said that if the purchase did not go through, the owner of that land got a large amount of money for doing nothing. I'd love to get a large amount of money for doing and providing nothing. And so now, what's before you now is an attempt to purchase more land, and you don't even know if you're going to actually build on it yet, and then after the fact, after you purchase the land, you're going to take it to the residents of Garfield and offer your proposals? This doesn't just affect Garfield. This affects all of the residents. If it doesn't happen, we've done it yet again. We've given away free money on land that we're not even going to use. And again, I'm going to hit you with this. We're gonna, if you're gonna purchase a new jail, of course, we recommend that we refurbish the old site because it's culture and its inefficiencies in the system that has killed people there, but if we're gonna purchase a jail, I recommend that we don't necessarily go that route. We're going to need to actually go and provide something that's actually going to be beneficial to the community. The community benefits by it staying downtown, and so I ask that you keep it downtown where the services that are necessary are there in that location. Thank you.
Latonya Goldsby.
Good afternoon. My name is Latonya Goldsby, President and co-founder of Black Lives Matter Cleveland. I'm a resident and taxpayer of Cuyahoga County, and I do not consent to my tax dollars being used to purchase the property in Garfield Heights. The reason why is because it's not the building that's killing people. There is a culture of toxicity that lies within that building, and it has nothing to do with the structure itself. It has everything to do with leadership and management. And yet again, you all are here making decisions about our tax dollars without our consent. We have come into this room on several occasions and made several comments in opposition to this purchase, and to no avail. Yesterday, there was another death, and I have not heard one councilperson say anything about that life that was lost on your watch. But you want us to consent to our tax dollars being spent on a property that we know that is, once it's built, that toxic environment that exists within that current structure will also be transcended over into that new building, unless you address the culture that exists inside that building that is refusing to give folks access to medication, refusing to give folks access to quality food. Those are the issues that the folks that are locked inside those walls are facing. It has nothing to do with the building and the structure. That's poor leadership. I am tired of coming into this room and pleading with you all to make the right decision. We have been having this conversation for over four years. The residents and county taxpayers have come into this room and they have voiced their opinions about alternatives to incarceration. You all have not fully focused on criminal justice reform, bail reform, and accountability. There's accountability to be had. Those families that have lost loved ones, we're up to 17 people if we account the person who died yesterday. Seventeen family members have been impacted by county failures to act on criminal justice reform and bail reform and decreasing the population with the side to jail. Those should be the main focus and priorities of this body. I implore you today to make the right decision and to halt the purchase of this jail site in Garfield. Thank you.
That concludes the public comment portion for today's meeting.
Matters referred to committee, our confirmation hearing. Welcome to the confirmation hearing at which council will consider the appointment of Kelly Woodard as the Director of Communications for Cuyahoga County. The Department of Communications was formally created in 2011 as its own appointing authority. The department operates under the direction of the county executive. This position is subject to confirmation by the council as a departmental director. The hearing process will proceed as follows. The nominee will be offered an opportunity to address her qualifications, motivations for seeking the position, and outlooks and plans regarding the office. Council members will then be offered the opportunity to ask questions of the nominee. For the sake of time and to allow the opportunity for everyone to ask questions, I'd ask members to limit themselves to two questions. Time permitting, additional questions may be asked once everyone has had an opportunity. Once all questions have been asked, we will entertain a motion to recommend that council approve or reject the nomination for second reading at tonight's council meeting and consideration for third reading at the August 1st council meeting. At this time, Madam Clerk, if you would read the resolution to the record.
Resolution 2023-0180, confirming the county executive's appointment of Kelly Lynn Woodard upon her taking the oath of office as Director of Communications.
All right. At this time, Ms. Woodard, feel free to address council. Welcome.
Thank you, Council President Jones. Ladies and gentlemen of the Cuyahoga County Council, good afternoon. My name is Kelly Woodard, and I am county executive Chris Ronein's nominee for Director of Communications for Cuyahoga County. It is an honor to be nominated, and if approved, it will be a privilege to serve in this role. The role of Director of Communications carries immense responsibility as it can influence the flow of information between the government and the people it serves. As Director of Communications, I will ensure our messages foster transparency, trust, and inclusion. I want to put a face and a voice to the untold stories in overlooked communities throughout the county. I want to share the resources and programs that our neighbors and business owners need to thrive. I want to tell the stories of the amazing county employees who have worked tirelessly to improve our communities. The messages shared with the staff are equally important. I believe that effective communication with employees is the cornerstone of building strong relationships, fostering engagement, and driving positive change throughout an organization. One of the greatest strengths, one of my greatest strengths, is the ability to talk to people from all walks of life. As the Director of Marketing at Cleveland Public Library, I am crafting and managing messages to our staff, patrons, and community partners daily to promote the mission and vision of the People's University. Depending on the audience, the message might appear different, yet it's consistent with the library's goal to serve as a center of learning for a diverse and inclusive community. We provide access to vital services, learning opportunities, and spaces for conversations that matter. I honed my communication skills in a television newsroom for 20 years, where I decided what was newsworthy and how to best tell a complex story to an audience. Ready or not, the news at 5 starts at 5, so I understand the importance of time constraints and working in a fast-paced environment. My passion for news, information, and people started in Lansing, Michigan, and eventually took me across the country to Texas, Connecticut, New York, Virginia, and Ohio. I have been exposed to different cultures and have gained invaluable experience in public relations, cross-platform communication, crisis management, and worked with cross-functional teams. I have covered some of the most difficult stories in our nation's history, such as the Sandy Hook school shooting in Newtown, Connecticut, Hurricane Katrina, countless police shootings, government corruption, tornadoes, and the list goes on. These skills have helped me showcase Cleveland Public Library to Northeast Ohio, and I will do the same for Cuyahoga County. I was born and raised in Detroit to two educators. I earned a bachelor's in journalism from Michigan State University. You can say that I bleed green and white because both my parents attended MSU and were proud Spartans. My mother was a former MSU trustee, which is publicly elected by Michigan voters, so I know what it takes to run an election. For fans of the Ohio State University, I know we have a little something in common. Neither of us like the University of Michigan. So in addition to my bachelor's degree, I have a master of business administration from Youngstown State University. For the past five years, I have called Cuyahoga County home, and I now reside in Mayfield Heights in District 6. Since living here, I have enjoyed everything that the region has to offer, from Playhouse Square to the metro parks to one of the greatest hidden gems in our area, Cleveland Public Library. My passion for community service has led me to serve on the board of the Journey Center for Safety and Healing and volunteer with the Kids Book Bank and It Your Time to Shine, which empowers women in greater Cleveland. In conclusion, I bring a wealth of experience in strategic communication, staff relationship management from diverse organizations. I have successfully handled numerous high-pressure situations, providing timely and accurate information to the public. I understand the importance of transparency, empathy, and maintaining public and staff trust. I firmly believe that my experience, skills, and unwavering dedication make me the ideal nominee for the position of Director of Communications for Cuyahoga County. I am committed to promoting the county's achievements, addressing public concerns, and amplifying the voices of its diverse population. I look forward to answering your questions. Thank you for your time and consideration.
All right, thank you, Ms. Woodard. At this time, are there any questions from council? Councilman Schron.
Welcome. Turn my microphone on. What experience, if any, do you have specifically working directly with an elected official in your communication roles in the past?
I do not have any experience working directly with an elected official. However, the skills that I possess from working at Cleveland Public Library and my 20 years of television news experience are transferable to any industry, including government. Those skills include media relations, messaging, and strategic thinking.
And as you announced in your opening comments that you were nominated by Chris Ronein as county executive, so that's who you're going to be reporting to, even though we have a reviewing obligations here. You said you can take hot issues. You said you can bring them forth. You've just got a chance to have a precursor with the public comments, okay? Let's give you a hot one. Chris Ronein, county executive, is recommending a site called the Garfield site for the new jail. How are you going to present that messaging forth to the community? Because your bosses, that's what he's recommending.
Well, I can say what I know about the jail is basically what I have read in the news or seen on television. I think I can't give you an answer as to how I would message that until I actually have some more closer conversations with the county executive, as well as visit the jail and meet with the sheriff to understand the situation.
But your messaging is going to have to be his messaging as you go forward, because that's who is bringing forth and who's your boss. Do you have any problems with that issue if it comes up to that?
No, I think that aligning our messages is key to this position and to the county, so I don't have a problem with that.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Councilman Miller.
Mr. President, Ms. Woodard, congratulations on your appointment.
Thank you.
And I believe that if approved, that you would be the first African-American woman to hold the position. Is that correct?
That is the first time I've heard that, but that is, that's like, wow. I think that is a tremendous honor, but I think that hopefully in taking the position and being the first African-American woman gives hope to little girls that look like me, that you can dream big and do whatever you want.
So, Mr. President, Ms. Woodard, there are going to be times when the executive and the council have different perspectives on the same issue, that they want to get out to the public. And I think it would be better for the county if there's not too much of that kind of conflict. And my question is, is what would you do to reduce the number or severity of such conflict situations? And when they do arise, how would you handle them?
Well, I think each situation is unique, so I would have to take each situation and tailor the messaging to what the situation arises to. But it's my understanding and what I firmly believe that finding common ground and aligning messages is what it will take to minimize conflict in the public. I think we are stronger together, and so I look forward to having the open lines of communication from the administration's office to the council's office so that we can work together.
So, Mr. President, to Ms. Woodard, does that mean that it would be your regular practice on important messaging to share your intended messaging with the council before you send it out so that we would have a heads up on what's going out?
I think it is important that no one is caught off guard. So when possible, yes, I think we can work together to align messages.
So, Mr. President, Ms. Woodard, my final question for this round is that there are always going to be situations arise where things happen that are going to be unfavorably reported on, or whether other players or media outlets put out negative information from our perspective, and so that it requires damage control. And my question is, is what would be your basic outlook and strategy on how to minimize the damage when there's negative press material?
Well, from my experience in working on both sides in the public sector and in television, I think there isn't a cookie-cutter response to how you respond to damage control or how you minimize damage control. However, I do think it is important to acknowledge whatever the mistake is or whatever has happened, to just make sure that you know how to assess the situation. I also think it's important to take responsibility where you can, because the public's trust is really all you have, and so you want to make sure you do not lose that. And I think, you know, it's also important, and what I would do is work with all affected parties, just to make sure that we can align our messages moving forward so that we can minimize any further damage.
Thank you, and that'll conclude my questions for now. I may have a question or two in the next round.
Any further questions?
Bye.
Councilwoman Simon, and then Councilwoman Conwell.
Thank you. Congratulations on your nomination.
Thank you.
I have a question about how important do you think it is for you to understand the complex web of Health and Human Services Administration to be able to effectively communicate about that realm?
I have experience in working with cross-functional teams. So I think to understand Health and Human Services, I would have to get to know the team, get to know the priorities there, and to work together so that we can promote the great things that's happening in the department, and to have unified messaging.
Would you elevate the people on whom you rely, or take credit for, you know, whatever information they're going to impart to you based on their experience and history here at the county?
So I think everyone is an expert, and I don't believe that one person has to be the voice of an entity or an agency. What I normally, what I do currently at Cleveland Public Library is media training. And so if there is a person who's in charge of a program or a service, I consider them the experts, even though I can sit in and do the interview for them. I also train them on the messages so that they can also represent the library. And so I hope to do the same for the county as well.
And do you believe the Communication Department is adequately staffed, and do you anticipate coming back to this body requesting funding?
It is my understanding that there are three people currently in the department, and there are two openings. I think that for me to determine whether it is adequately staffed, I will need to get in there and evaluate the roles and responsibilities of the people who are currently doing the work to see if we are adequately staffed.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Councilwoman Conwell?
Through the chair, to Ms. Woodard, congratulations on your nomination thus far.
Thank you.
We are exploring a communications person, and this will be a new endeavor for Cuyahoga County for both administration and council to have better communications for residents of Cuyahoga County. How do you think your office will communicate the communications with our office? So right now, we don't have communications. We haven't for 12 years, and so we're exploring that possibility, just to give you some background.
Thank you for that. I think what I would do is have some regular dialogue with the person that you choose to represent your media department. I think that for us to work together, to share information, and to be able to make sure that county council and administration are on the same page and united.
Thank you. Thank you for that.
You're welcome.
I'm just interested in a few details. If you could provide some details on your specific experience managing a team or a department in the communication field.
So currently, at Cleveland Public Library, I manage a team of four in the marketing department. And then when I worked in television news as a news director, I managed a team in excess of 50. So from both sides of communications, I have experience in managing teams.
And you're currently at the li-
I am currently at the library.
Cleveland Public or county?
Cleveland Public.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right. Any further questions? Councilman Kelly?
Thank you, Mr. President. We haven't had a chance to meet yet, but I'm looking over and to piggyback off the last question. When you were at the television, it looked like you were there for one year, and then you left. Okay. So I'm looking at your history since you've been here in Cleveland, and you've changed jobs several times. Is this a job you want to stick with, maybe? Or are we going to be looking for another communications director in another year or two?
No, this is definitely something I plan to stick with. To just give you a little bit of background, in television, you do move around a lot. And when I moved here, yes, I did leave Channel 5. That was my last stop. You know, I left earlier than I anticipated. However, you know, I also had, you know, a traumatic death in the family. You know, my mother died. So that forced me to kind of change my focus. And so with that, I decided to work outside, to continue my communications journey, but outside of a television newsroom. And my first stop was at the Girl Scouts to see if that is something that I would enjoy doing and being outside of a newsroom after 20 years. And I did enjoy it. However, Cleveland Public Library was the better fit for me, and that's where I've been for the past four years.
Thank you, and sorry for the loss of your mother.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. President.
Councilwoman Sweeney.
Thank you, Mr. President. Welcome, Director-to-be.
Thank you.
I just liked your presence. Your comments are very succinct, and you're very true to yourself, which I appreciate. You're going to be working for Chris, right, executive team?
Yes.
And you're going to be, after the executive team, you're going to go with their gameplan and execute your role in the executive team. Is that correct?
Yes.
And through the chair, so we don't know if you're going to have a lockdown approach, a very open approach. You're just going to figure it out as time goes on, right?
Well, what I would like to do is spend the first 30 to 60 days getting to know all of you, as well as all of the different agencies and departments within Cuyahoga County, just to kind of see the needs and the priorities. And I think that's how I will kind of set the strategy for communication. But I always have an open door, no matter what. So I think the best way to communicate is to have an open line of communication and be honest and transparent, whether it's internally or externally.
And through the chair, I was just talking about with the media. Normally, the communication person, this administration is, oh, open and transparent. This administration is a lockdown. They won't give anything out. So that's what I was going with. I assumed you're going to be very personable and get to know everybody in your new setting here.
Yes.
And on that topic through the chair, public records request, that's a big part of this place. How do you think you're going to handle it, or just if you don't have a position now because you're not here, that's going to be one coming to a theater near you soon?
Yes. Well, I have experience with public records requests, kind of on both sides. I've submitted some when I worked in the news, but I've also received some and handled them at the library. And I work in partnership with the legal department to determine, you know, what information needs to be given to the media. But, you know, I believe in a proactive approach to communication, especially with the media. So, you know, because of that, sometimes you will know when it's coming, and you know what to prepare for.
And through the chair, thank you. You got my support, and I'm looking forward to working with you.
Thank you.
Are there questions?
Thank you, second round. I was waiting my turn. One of the things that the Director of Law is responsible to provide good advice to both the county executive and to the county council, even though the appointment and the nomination comes from the county executive on both this, your position in that. Would you see the ability to actually support communications from this body, or is your sole allegiance to the county executive?
It is my understanding that in this position, that I do work for the county executive and his administration. However, I am open and willing to work closely and across departments and agencies with other departments to talk about communications and to work on strategies for promoting whatever your issue might be.
Okay, our issue, hopefully.
Our issues, yes.
Thanks. I do that all the time with folks, to try and make sure it's a big team.
Absolutely.
Sometimes, in your position, you're going to get thrown with really tough questions that come up with no notice whatsoever. And obviously, again, you got a chance to hear one that just came up a few minutes ago about a death that took place yesterday. It was just dropped on your desk. You're now the communications director. Tell us how you would approach, and I'm not asking for what you're going to do in this particular situation. Please don't expect I'm going to put you under the burden, but what are the prep steps you have to do to make sure you get the messaging both correctly from a sensitivity standpoint and handling a difficult message as to what this has been put into your, as Director of Communications, responsibility?
Well, before any messages go out, I would definitely talk to the sheriff or whoever is in charge of the jail to get the information and to find out what happened with the inmate. Also, I would want to make sure that their family or closest relative has been notified. I just know if it were me, I wouldn't want to read it in the news. So I think it's important that that contact has been made. And then from there, I think we will work together to decide what is the best course of action to let the media know that this has happened.
In order to be on the front end of that messaging, the parties have to make sure that you are on the front end of the receiving of those facts. Otherwise, you're responding too late. So I like the fact you want to be party to that on the upfront side, so that's the only way you're going to get the messaging out correctly. If it comes out, like you say, in the, reading about in the newspaper, on the TV, your ability to be the communications director would have been really hampered on that. So I hope that the county executive, the sheriff, everybody knows how critically important it is that the communications director be on the upfront side of that informational gathering. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, okay. Through the chair, to Ms. Woodard again. So HHS, I'm the Health and Human Services Chair, has a Director of Communication. You're going to be the administration's Director of Communications, I'm assuming for the administration needs and for other agencies. And the Department of Children and Family Services, news regarding something serious in relation to children's deaths or something like that, usually has a spokesperson, Mary Louise. So I'm just wondering, I don't know if you know all this, so I'm just trying to understand for myself where that communication will come from. Like, will you be over, I can't think of the young lady's name, the director at HHS Communications, will you be kind of overseeing all of that, or just specific? And the reason I say that is because this county has a problem with departments being in their silos, and we've got to get better with cross-sharing information. And we've got to get better with cross-sharing information, and they're just kind of stuck in their silos. And HHS is the, really the foundation of the county, and so we need to be able to get that information out to everyone. So just, if you had any thoughts on, you know, I don't know what the conversations you've had with the executives. So I'm just trying to understand myself, how would that tier or that communication flow?
It is my understanding that I work for the executive and the administration. However, I do believe in open lines of communication. So what I would like to do when I begin is to go over to HHS, meet with the Director and other managers to find out the priorities, how they currently communicate, what are their strategies, and maybe we can work together to figure out if there are stronger strategies that they can implement and that we can help amplify their message.
That helps me a little bit, because when I think of, when I think of a Director of Communication, from the administrative standpoint, I'm thinking that you're kind of, would be over all of those, those various directors and various departments. So I'm just looking to see if that's how you felt your role would be as well.
We have not discussed that.
Okay. So as soon as you know that answer, please let me know, because I, you know, there's communication all over. When a child dies, it's the saddest thing that happens with this county, especially when we're the parents of that child. And so, and previously, how the administration has handled it, that information is not coming from the Director of Communication, and it's confirmable position. So you kind of understand how I'm a little lost, and I just want to be clear on how we move forward with that, so I can understand the lines of communication. Thank you.
Well, if confirmed, I look forward to speaking with you to understand the situation more.
Councilman Miller?
Thank you, Mr. President, and to Ms. Woodard. So far, the discussion has been almost entirely about external communications. But I got the impression from some of your comments that you would be directing internal communications within the organization as well. And my question is, is that correct? And if yes, how do you believe that internal communications in Cuyahoga County government can be improved?
Yes, I will be in charge of internal communications. I think managing internal communications is important and just crucial to a smooth operation. You know, I am a strong believer that our staff should know what messages are going out to the public before they read about it or hear about it. I think that, you know, there are probably a lot of tools that are used here internally. I don't know all of them, just because I haven't started yet. But I can tell you, over at CPL, we use a variety of ways to communicate with our internal staff. And whether that is through Yammer, which is kind of like our Facebook for CPL. We use e-newsletters. We have town hall, monthly town hall meetings. We have digital billboards. There are a variety of ways to speak to the staff. So I hope to amplify those messages and use those tools here. And if they're already being used, I look forward to hearing from the staff about, to find out which tools are being used and how they are getting information and which information is useful to them.
Mr. President, Ms. Woodard, would you expect to spend more of your time on external communications or more of your time on internal communications, or do you think it would be about the same?
I think it will be a healthy balance.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right. Any further questions? Just a quick one, Councilman?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just more of a request.
Yes.
Please tell Felton I said hi.
I will.
Thank you.
Well, Ms. Woodard, how will you measure the success of a campaign or a communication strategy?
There are several tools to help manage campaigns and strategies. What I currently use over at CPL is Critical Mention, and that helps us to manage the media mentions. We've also used Meltwater to do the same, and they've been very successful for us. I can say that since I started at CPL in 2019, we have had exceeded media mentions of 2,000 annually. And before I started, it was barely 900. So, you know, I think there is, it's important to kind of monitor your success and failures to see where you can, where you can make changes.
Thank you. Are there any further questions?
I have a follow-up.
Yes, Councilwoman?
Just a follow-up. When I asked you about anticipating having to come before this body, requesting resources to hire additional staff in your department, you said you'll have to get in there and see. Is there an anticipation of hiring a press secretary that you know of?
I have seen the position posted. But, you know, during my interview process, I was told that there was plans to increase the staff. But I don't, outside of that, I do not know what that looks like right now. So I, you know, I look forward to kind of getting in there and evaluating everybody to see where everyone fits best.
Okay. And coming before this body with a request for resources is not always going to result in what they ask is. And how would you respond to that when this, if this council decides that this particular department's getting way too bloated?
Well, I would hope that, you know, I think you need a team to adequately spread the message of the county. The county's huge. And so I think, you know, we're going to need some people to help do that. And, you know, of course, have I done more with less in other places? Absolutely. But I also know that we also can be better and stronger when you have the staffing to really spread the message and actually focus on different departments and agencies.
Thank you.
All right. Well, if there are no further questions, Ms. Woodard, we thank you for your presentation today. It was very thorough and sincere. And so at this time, I will entertain a motion to move this resolution to appoint Kelly Lynn Woodard to the full body of council for second reading. Is there a motion? Properly moved by Sweeney and seconded by Councilman Gallagher. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Ayes have it. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Madam Clerk, if you would read our next item into the record.
Resolution 2023-0181, approving a cooperative agreement with the City of Cleveland and to be formed, and a to be formed nonprofit corporation to be known as the North Coast Development Corporation to facilitate development and redevelopment projects in the City of Cleveland Lakefront.
All right. Well, we will be introducing our proposed substitute and our law director, Mr. Rick Maniloff. We will allow you to, in that respect.
Sure. Mr. Council President, I recommend the proposed substitute language based upon discussions with the Inspector General relating to nonprofit board members serving the county's interests ex officio. I believe the additional language will better protect the interests of the county and those ex officio members serving on this nonprofit board. The proposed changes do not affect the basic substance of Section 1 of this particular legislation, which is the approval of the cooperative agreement and the contribution in an amount not to exceed $750,000 for three years to the NCDC.
Begin with the motion to accept the proposed substitute. Is there a motion?
I'll move.
Properly moved. Is there a second? I will second. Properly moved and seconded. All those in-
Mr. President?
Councilman Miller?
Question to the law director, if I may.
Yes, go right ahead.
My question is about the underlying language at the end of the, of the Section 1, where it says that the council president or the president's designee is instructed to represent the county's interests on the board. Who determines what the county's interests are?
I would respond to that question by saying that the ex officio member of the board would make that determination while serving on the board.
So how does this language change anything?
The language is important in, I can get into the weeds, and I'm happy to. It relates to an Ohio Ethics Commission opinion, number 2001-05, and other related Ethics Commission opinions, where it's important that the legislation moving forward with something like this contain language that, quote, "The public official must be formally instructed to represent the governmental entity and its interests." And so while the language may be seen to be obvious, it is important to include it based upon my discussions with the Inspector General and based upon my review of the Ohio Ethics Commission opinions.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So let me say this to council. Over the next two hours and 15 minutes, we have to deal with this item, which is a very weighty and significant matter, as well as our, again, our discussion around the jail over the next two hours and 15 minutes. So we'll look to a lot, an hour here and about an hour and 15, give or take, how the conversation goes. But right now, of course, what we're doing is simply looking to get this amendment on the table so that we can have a robust discussion around. So again, we do have a motion and a second, simply to introduce the proposed substitute. We had discussion, if there's any further discussion.
I do. We have one quick question. I understand the time constraint. I want to ask the law director. So do you anticipate this language, then, having to be added to other ex officio positions in the county? Is that-
I do.
It's not going to be unique to this?
That is correct. Going forward, yes. I agree.
Okay. So again, at this moment, all those in favor of accepting the proposed substitute, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. At this time, the floor is turned over to Erica. Is Ms. Annie Pease with you as well? Is she here?
Yes, we have Dr. Pease right there.
Well, I'll allow you to present as you will. I didn't know if you were both going to be here together.
Yep, absolutely. First of all, I just want to thank Council President and council for having us today. As mentioned, my name is Eric Whoopsir. I'm the former Chief of Staff to the county executive. I'm currently serving an advisory role during my last few weeks with the county, here today to talk to you about the creation of the North Coast Development Corporation. And in addition to myself, Annie Pease, the Transportation Director, who's been an active member of the Operating Committee for the Lakefront, is here, as well as representatives of the Greater Cleveland Partnership, who's played a staffing role of that process, as well as the City of Cleveland. So if there's any questions, they might be able to help answer some of those. There we go. So the first thing I want to talk a little bit about is just to make clear what jurisdiction this does and doesn't include as it relates to the Lakefront. One of the things that has been going on for some time is that the county has been playing a leadership role in creating stronger and a more vibrant Lakefront and public access throughout the entire county. Those projects will continue. They will fall outside the scope of the proposed Lakefront Authority. And the reason we're proposing the Lakefront Authority for this is because we are active in leading Lakefront projects, whether it's the recent announcement of the Mandel Foundation helping to fund that connection of East 9th to 55th Street. I've had several meetings on the West Shore communities with mayors of suburban communities about the public access projects there. Those will continue to be managed in-house. Public Works actually has a dedicated full-time Lakefront planner that will continue to work on those. The reason that we're proposing that the downtown Lakefront project is managed through this creation of this waterfront authority is that it is a more complex project. The City of Cleveland and Greater Cleveland Partnership have led these conversations and involved the county in those. But really, they need specific work on a day-to-day basis that's different because it's a very large infrastructure project, as well as the creation of a pipeline of development with that public space infrastructure. We don't want that to distract from the great work that the county's doing. But we also think it's really important that the work that we're doing to the east and west will not be as effective if there isn't a strong core downtown Lakefront. So we just want to make very clear, you will continue to see the county lead on the lakefront, the riverfront, both directly through the role that we play with Public Works and in the executive's office. But in addition to that, as a member of this Lakefront Authority that is more primarily focused on a stronger connection between the downtown waterfront and the downtown community. The scope of this, the background, I'll just read this here. "The City of Cleveland and Cuyahoga County intend to form a waterfront development authority with the sole purpose to plan and implement transformational projects on the waterfront. The entity will be known as the North Coast Development Corporation and will assist the City of Cleveland and its partners with the equitable development of the North Coast Lakefront as a destination for residents, businesses, and recreation. This funding will be directed toward the creation, staffing, and operations of the NCDC. The initial investment will lay the foundation and provide shared leadership for a decade or more of transformative development on the lakefront." These are projects, or the process to the creation of this organization has been underway since the beginning of 2022. The county has been invited to participate on committees led by both the Greater Cleveland Partnership as well as the City of Cleveland, as to directly that. I've played a role as the Chief of Staff, as well as other folks like Annie Pease and the Public Works Department on those several committees. And in addition to that, our incoming Chief of Integrated Development, Debbie Berry, has played a leadership role as Staff to the Greater Cleveland Partnership. When she starts on July 20th, she will assume the role that I've been playing on those committees and be the lead staff person from Cuyahoga County to participate in the creation or the implementation of the work of the new organization. And why consider a new development entity on the lakefront? Development authorities and corporations are proposed to plan, implement, and manage large-scale projects that have benefits that include, and I think a very important one is a singular and dedicated focus to the project. This is a very complicated project to implement, you know, bridging Lakefront from downtown across railroad tracks, across the highway, activating land on the waterfront, some of which is formerly dredged material. There's a lot of complex environmental and infrastructure work that has to take place. And then just the gap financing of this development is not something that the county or the city would normally undertake in-house, but it has the potential to be transformative for the waterfront, which is really a symbol of, you know, Cleveland's role as a waterfront city. And I think it goes back 100 years. If you've read the publicity on this, Cleveland has made attempts to create a more vibrant waterfront in the community. I think for the first time, because of the great work you see on the east side, because of the great work you see on the west side, and because of the vision to connect to the lake, we can layer onto the great work that's been done at North Coast Harbor and really become a community that not only talks about the potential of its waterfront, but has realized that with strong public access and vibrancy that comes from that. Another benefit of this is that we'll continue to access public and private funding mechanisms. By virtue of partnering, we'll establish continuity across market and political cycles. As the mission statement said, this is something that's going to take a decade or more. It will span the administration of more than one mayor. It will span the administration of more than one county executive. This is very complicated work that we need to make sure will continue to go forward, even as administrations change. It also creates internal capacity and partnerships to address all project implementation needs. And I view that capacity as providing benefit in two ways. One is it allows our existing capacity internally to the county to continue to focus on other areas of priority, but it allows capacity in this new organization by virtue of the shared resources of the city, the county, and other entities to ensure that this project can continue to move forward. And it also adopts a clear mission and dedicated resources and expertise to robust and inclusive engagement. to robust and inclusive engagement to build consensus and support for the connection to the lake. One of the things that happened in the work that started in 2022 through the committee that was created to study this, the city, the Greater Cleveland Partnership contracted with HRNA to study the potential of creating a new waterfront development authority in Cleveland. The work included conversations with the city administration and council, county administration, as well as nonprofit and private stakeholders, including the Metro Parks, the Port of Cleveland, Noeaca, the Downtown Cleveland Alliance, the Rock and Roll Hall of Fame, the Great Lakes Science Center, and the Haslam Sports Group in order to build an understanding of the context and needs of development. HRNA gathered models and best practices from development authorities across the country that address similar challenges and opportunities and offered specific actionable lessons for the governance and delivery model for the Cleveland Lakefront. Based on engagement and case studies, HRNA made recommendations for a waterfront development authority delivery model and narrowed the focus for future planning to certain tools, structures, and ingredients for success. And what you see on this slide are four really good examples of where they've addressed similar infrastructure challenges, connecting to the Lakefront from the core of the city, and balanced the creation of great public access, development opportunity, and programming to really revitalize the waterfront. Seattle is a great example on the West Coast. And then you see the example of the Hudson River Park. And then a little bit closer to home, the Louisville Waterfront. And even in the state of Ohio, the Banks is a very large public-private effort that built on a similar model to make better connections between downtown Cincinnati and the Ohio River. If you look at that map there, you can see the general footprint or area of influence and planning that the new waterfront authority will take on. And again, the activities that will undertake are the coordination of a master plan and then developing and implementing that plan, facilitating financing for public improvements and other development projects, negotiating potential development leases or public-private partnerships between the public sector land and development opportunities that exist on that land, contract for construction and/or maintenance of certain infrastructure improvements or enhancements, and performing real property diligence is necessary, such as hiring environmental consultants and coordinating geotechnical review. More specifically, if you take a look at this more up-close map and you can see in the area outlined in red, that is the property that is proposed to be within this footprint. The golden or yellow land is land controlled or owned by the city of Cleveland. And then the pink land is the land that is owned or controlled by Cuyahoga County. So you can see we are one of the largest stakeholders on the downtown side of this, which is one of the reasons we think it's really important to be engaged, is how, you know, downtown is in a unique situation right now, adjusting to the pandemic. The county is heavily invested along the group plan just south of the Lakefront with the convention center, with the Medical Mart Hotel, with the Justice Center Block, with County Square, with the historic courthouse in Huntington Park. It is very important to the county's future land interests that we are a part of this planning process to make a stronger connection to the lake and that the emphasis of this is not just on what happens on the lakeside, but how do we make sure that downtown stays healthy and connected and that it's a two-way connection, not a one-way connection to the waterfront. As we start to get into the governmental structure, one of the things that I want to make sure we understand is that all we're asking county council to approve or support today is the creation of a 501(c)(3) and financial support of the county of that 501(c)(3). It does not commit any county property to the future creation of what's called a new community authority, which is a separate structure that would be created that would allow specific tools to be available, including providing incremental public financing from various public sources to help finance public improvements or private development. What this does today is gives the county a seat at the table to be a supporter and a partner of the larger Lakefront planning. One of the things that we've negotiated with the city of Cleveland and the other partners is that in addition to getting two board seats as part of this entity, is that we would have a shared responsibility for picking the first executive director. So we get a seat at the table for the important project. We get to make sure that the county's land is considered in how this gets planned. But what we're not doing today is giving away any of the future commitments of either the administration or the council as to how specifically the county might fund beyond the scope of what's envisioned today, any public improvements. Or alternatively, whether any land of the county will be considered in any way as part of a new community authority. And what new community authority does, it functions in some ways like a special improvement district. But it's important to note, in a special improvement district, there are thresholds that often are in the 60% to 70% range of the amount of property holders that need to support that for any assessments or fees to come from that. With the new community authority, 100% of the proposed property. So any county property that might be considered as part of a future footprint would have to come back to this council for consideration. So we're not asking for that today. That is something, though, that we want to be transparent, is something, whether it includes county land or not, that they do intend to come back to create. Because what a new community authority does, in some ways it functions like a TIF, in addition to an improvement district, where it gives the ability to take future development and revenue streams that can be generated only if that future development goes forward and only happen if the development goes forward and to put those back into covering some of the costs of making that development possible through infrastructure and gap financing improvements. I think in this case, even potentially with new community authorities, you have the ability to look at operations and maintenance as part of what those can do too. But it's a new political subdivision formed by city council. And again, no county council property could be included in that unless this body made a choice to include that property and get them to that 100% threshold. As far as governance, what's envisioned is a 13-member board of trustees that would oversee the nonprofit. The county would have two appointments to that 13-member board. One would be the council president or the council president's designee. The other would be the county executive or the county executive's designee. In addition to those two, there'd be seven appointments from the city of Cleveland that are also a split between the mayor, city council, as well as some joint appointments of city council. There are three stakeholders from the Lakefront themselves that will be a part of the board. And then the governor will make one appointment to the committee. In addition to us having two members of the 13 board members, again, at the outset, the agreement envisions that the hiring of the first executive director of this organization has to be approved by both the city and the county. So we do get that initial say in the beginning to ensure that we feel like the right leader is in place for this organization. In addition to those board members, the idea is that they'll hire that executive director and that the first two key positions that are envisioned is a vice president. They'll be on the development side. And then a vice president sits on the financing side that puts together the capital stack to help support the infrastructure and the private development that would take place on the property. As far as the actual commitment that we're asking county council to consider today is we're initially estimated that the work will take at least 1.25 million annually for salary benefits and contracts. There will be an additional major initial third-party expenses, including due diligence expenses such as environmental, real estate, geotech, and legal and accounting expenses. The city of Cleveland has agreed to provide 1 million annually for three years. And then Cuyahoga County would provide an additional 250,000 annually for three years. And then the commitments of the city and the county would be supplemented by grants from the private sector and philanthropic sector to be accessed to reduce burdens on the public sector. And then as development is completed, the plan is to shift expenses from the public to development sources such as land lease revenue, special improvement districts, and the new community authority. As far as how we will pay for that three-year 750,000, the recommendation today is that the first 250,000, or the commitment for the first year, is to come from ARPA funds. And then we would build into the budget of the county executive the funding for the 24 and 25 commitment. That's all I have. I'm happy to answer any questions from council about the creation of the nonprofit and the county's role.
All right, any questions?
Mr. President.
Councilman.
Thank you. Through the chair, thank you for being here this afternoon. So a couple of things here. I mean, a couple of things stand out to me, areas of concern for council. First, the number of members on the board that you would have. I just think that's, I just think it would be unacceptable to at least myself just to have two members. And it's not just that City of Cleveland has seven members. It's that the mayor also appoints a couple of other stakeholders on the board in addition to that. So it seems to be disproportionate to the, you know, we're talking about the amount of land that Cuyahoga County would be involved in with respect to Cleveland. It just seems disproportionate to have that little say in a board. I'm not exactly, could you maybe explain your rationale behind what the administration's thinking is on having so few representatives on a board of such, what you guys would be deemed as such an important thing?
Yeah, absolutely. And I'll go back to the slide where we, I don't know if we're able to get the presentation back up. I apologize. What do I need to? Okay, take your time. So one is the initial ask of the city of Cleveland to the county was for $500,000 annually of the total for a one and a half million dollar budget. And that, within that, we'd get a third board seat. Our view was that 500,000 annually for operating support was a large ask of the county. And that we thought 250,000 was more in line based on how the county is supported from an operating perspective, other, you know, civic initiatives that combine city, county, and private sector support going forward. In return for the city agreeing for us to pay not the 500,000, but the 250,000, they asked to reduce that board seat by one. And our view was, we would not have a controlling interest on this board with three out of 13 or two out of 13. But we'd save 50% of that operating support. In addition to that, we were able to secure the commitment of the city to at the very least have a say in the hiring of that first director. And then if you look actually at the land as part of that footprint, you can see that roughly the county's about 20% to 25% of that footprint. And the city of Cleveland is about 70% to 75% of that footprint. So I think once again, the city's commitment of 1 million, the city controlling the vast majority of the land, the city controlling the land use interests, our thought was 250,000 felt like an appropriate amount. And that two of 13 gives both the county council and the county executive a seat at the table. But we don't think there was an alternative in which we had a controlling interest in this in any way. So our goal is to save county resources where possible, get that seat at the table, and get that say in the initial hiring of the director.
Well, it seems like a win-win for Cleveland. I mean, objectively speaking, it seems like a win-win for Cleveland. I just, and I also see the Haslam Sports Group as part of the, you know, part of the discussion here. I mean, is this a, is this, I'll be honest, is this a backdoor way of trying to get improvements on Cleveland Brown Stadium?
Through the council president to county council. One, the Browns have one seat out of 13. So in some ways...
We have two.
Yeah, so, so, but you're arguing that two isn't enough for us, but one is too many for the Browns? So I guess, I guess that's the question is...
Well, I don't own no stadium.
When you do the math on that, so I think the Browns...
The difference is I don't own, I don't own a stadium. Jimmy Haslam does.
No, no, I understand that.
I don't need a stadium.
Actually, the city of Cleveland owns a stadium, so...
Well, exactly.
So the Browns, the Browns are an important stakeholder on the Lakefront. There will be other Lakefront stakeholders that are also represented on this committee. I think it's important that in planning for the Lakefront, that we do take into consideration the largest stakeholders that are there. But the one thing I can guarantee you to your question is, is this a backdoor? I promise you that there have been no conversations that we've been a part of as to how this has anything to do with any proposals for the stadium. We are not an owner of the stadium. I don't think there's any sense that the county executive wants us to play a more formal role than we already play with the stadium. But we do think that the downtown Lakefront is very important to having an overall vibrant Lakefront in Cleveland. And that if you're going to have three Lakefront stakeholders in this footprint, it does make sense for the largest footprint to be included.
All right. So let me ask you this as a, maybe this should have been my first question. So with respect to the NCDC setting that up, I'm still trying to figure out why, why it's important to have a specific entity to handle individual projects as we move along. We've done what we've done with the lake up until now under the current format. Mr., you know, Kelly mentioned the other day he was concerned about expansion of offices and of government. And this seems like another expansion that I'm not exactly sure is necessary, you know, given the history that we've done with respect. Even the last few months, the executive has worked with Public Works to work on these Lakefront entities, you know, different properties. So I'm just not exactly sure why now, why the need now to, just for this specific area here. It seems like we could do things piecemeal, assess the price as they come along and make determinations as they come along, as opposed to creating a new entity with new stakeholders, new individuals, you know, in charge with county very limited in its ability to do anything. I'm worried about our inability to have a say in the process.
Well, what I would say is that most would argue that while great progress has been made on the Lakefront over the last several decades, that it's been too piecemeal and that the sum hasn't added up to be, to create, or the parts haven't added up to a greater sum in that the Lakefront doesn't feel connected or as vibrant as many of our peers. And I think that's a challenge that's been common to a lot of Lakefront communities, which is why the HRNA process led to looking at those best practices. And Cincinnati's a great example where they had the Banks project down there for decades, very similar to conversations about how Cleveland has or hasn't used its Lakefront effectively here. And they put together a model very similar to this one that brought a very similar set of stakeholders together and made a collective amount of public and private investments. And so I'd say the reason that this is needed is to fully realize the potential of the Lakefront and that it's going to be a better mechanism for attracting resources beyond the county's resources and beyond the city's resources. I think it makes it more likely that with the private sector support, we're going to be able to attract more philanthropic, private, state, and federal resources. I also think one of the important things that this will help us to accomplish is again, not to distract from the many other priorities of the city and the county, but to allow someone to focus on what is going to be a decade more project. I think, you know, again, working with the railroad, working with the highway to build that stronger Lakefront connection is something that should not be the county executives, should not be the mayor, should not be the county council or the city council's top priority. But it does require being someone's top priority for a period of time. And it doesn't make sense, based on the shared potential positive outcomes of getting this done, that any one of these entities should necessarily be the sole person to take all that on. So I think, I think the motto of, if you want to go fast, go alone. But if you want to go far, go together. I think our ability to move quickly on the Lakefront has stalled. And I think this is a collaborative process that includes philanthropy, private sector, public resources that provides a management model that over the course of a generation can actually get done what we've struggled to do for 100 years in Cleveland.
No, I appreciate that. And I, you know, I'm looking forward to hearing more information about it. It's just, at initial, my initial thought, I'm just concerned about this becoming something bigger and a lot of money going into it and the county just being a siphon for the city of Cleveland. I clearly want to make this, no, I mean, we, we are partners with the city of Cleveland. In fact, I'd like to see the city of Cleveland out here a little bit more often to discuss things. But, you know, again, I don't, I just, you know, we're the, we're the largest entity here. And I just think, as it stands right now, I don't know that it's in our best interest to go forward as it is right now.
Councilman Kelly.
Thank you, Mr. President. What powers is this new authority going to have once, once it's put in place? I mean, are they going to have the ability to issue debt levy fees? How about taxes?
Through the council president to the councilman, what is being asked of county council today would just allow county participation in funding of a new 501(c)(3) that would not create any additional powers in that entity. It is possible that at a later date, once this entity has stood up and staffed and concludes its own planning process, that they will come back with the idea of creating a new community authority. And a new community authority is a sort of quasi-public, quasi-private entity that does have the ability, if there is 100% participation amongst the property owners that exist in it, to look at fees and additional taxes beyond to serve as a gap financing mechanism for either building the infrastructure, maintaining the infrastructure, operating the district, or providing gap financing in the district. But none of that is being given by virtue of us participating today. That's a conversation that we could have at a later date. The city of Cleveland could do that without us. But what they can't do is include us in that unless we agree to participate.
President, to follow up on that. So, but right now, that just puts us in for three years, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so after that three years, then if they come up with another name of people that want to, or organizations that want to be part of this, the county could be left out of that. Or if the county wants to be put in that, it could, it could be for a lot more money than what originally starts that. So we have no idea what's going to happen down the road.
No, we don't. And we're not asking necessarily for support for anything beyond the three years of operating support and the participation of the county council president and the county executive to have those two seats at that table to help guide those decisions as they move forward. But there is no responsibility to do anything beyond the envisioned three years of funding, support, and selecting the executive director, and then participating on the board.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilman Simon.
Thank you. I wanted to follow up on Councilman Tuma's question about our disproportionate representation on this proposed authority. There's nothing meaningful about... There's nothing meaningful about our two seats. At the end of the day, Cleveland is going to rule. I don't know if council knows that if the governor fails to appoint, that, that seat goes to the city, correct?
I'd have to defer to the law director on that. I'm not familiar. I'm not either. I would need to take that under advisement.
That is my understanding from the paperwork.
Yes, from the paperwork. So then, you know, we really don't have a voice on this. We're just there to provide funding. But the question that I have about the funding is that it appears that we bartered and bought us, bought two seats at the table. You know, if we wanted more seats, we have to pay more. But the Browns owner, it has one seat for no contribution, nor is the Browns owner team part of this agreement. How is that fair, that the county's ponying up to buy seats and, and the Browns owner gets a freebie?
Through the council president to Councilwoman Simon, I wouldn't presume that there isn't gonna be additional funds raised from other partners. I just know that the public commitments, which are obviously, at this point, public record, are that the city's contributing the $1 million a year, and that the county's coming in at 25% of that, at $250,000 a year.
I'm just pointing.
They intend to, they intend to raise, I think, additional dollars.
Oh, okay. But, but also the county, I guess, we're, I heard you say that the new hire, Debbie Berry, is the one who's gonna be the dedicated staff person for this project, but, but Ms. Berry was working just a minute ago at GCP lobbying this council to participate in this. Why, why did the county shift that role from GCP now to the county to provide staff? Why, why couldn't that be done through GCP, who has a heavy hand in this?
Sure. To the councilwoman, what I would say is Debbie will have a much broader role with the county than just staffing the lakefront. She, we do have the benefit of her having a lot of experience on that project, but I think the Greater Cleveland Partnership, through Marty McGann, who's here today, and then Allison, I think Les Kay is, how do you pronounce her last name? Oh, she's here today, too, great. They're gonna continue to provide day-to-day staffing support. So we will get the luxury of Debbie Berry's experience, not only as a member of the lakefront committee, but also as someone who worked very hard, you know, nearly 20 years ago in the, to develop the lakefront plan when she was a planner in the, the lakefront office. But Debbie's responsibility will go far beyond just this project or even the lake. She will be overseeing the Housing Department, the Economic Development Department, the Public Works Department, and playing a strong role in sustainability and transportation. It's just, she will become the point person, the role that I've been playing for the last several months. She'll take over that role in addition to other responsibilities.
Okay, and my final, well, now, final question. I'll be coming back. Was the county involved in negotiating this agreement? And if so, by, by whom?
Just to make sure, to clarify-
This cooperative, the agreement in front of us, this-
Yes, yes. So various folks were involved in those conversations. I was personally involved in the conversations. Greg Huth, while acting law director, was involved in these conversations. And again, the initial ask was for twice as much resource for 50% more board representation. We shared the view that, whether it was 3 or 13, we weren't gonna control this, but our desire to support it is because we think it's very important for this project to happen. We think the county has a role in that. We are one of the biggest stakeholders, I think, are holding at the Hilton, are holding at the Convention Center, if connected to a vibrant lakefront, is going to pay back multiple return on that investment, as we're able to attract more investment into the Convention Center and the hotel by being a better connected waterfront city. So I say all that to say, you know, several staff, Annie Pease has been a member of that committee, mostly law, myself and Annie have probably been the most direct, hands-on people in Public Works, have been involved in it. But again, the two seats at the table were never designed to give us a controlling interest. They were designed to give us those seats at the table. We wanted to be invested, but not to over-invest, which is why we asked to do 250 instead of 500. But I do think some of the most important properties that the county controls and have the ability to have their own revenue go up or down by virtue of whether this lakefront project is successful are the Hilton and the Convention Center. I think this is a pretty modest investment when you look at the potential this has for county property.
Well, thank you so much for that. But you, you know, when we talk about the county having, being a heavy stakeholder, important stakeholder, and we have two seats, that doesn't compute. It doesn't. So we can't say, "I can't say," on the one hand, that we're so important to this and our, our future as the Hilton owners and the Convention Center, it's so vital, and we have two seats. That, that doesn't add up, and we can spin this all we want, and until, and if this, this board, this, this proposal includes the county fully, I, I don't, I don't think this is in the best interest of the county, because they're gonna carry on. GCP is here, they have an interest. The City of Cleveland has most of the control, if not all, through the, and with the Browns' owner, and they'll carry on to the benefit of the city. The county doesn't need to contribute-
If I could just briefly, yeah.
I, I don't know, ask the chair if you wanna respond. You can respond.
If I could respond to that. What I'd say is, it's just, it's very, I think, an important distinction to make, that land use is a municipal function, it's not a county function. And I am not aware of any incident in this county or any other county, frankly, in doing development for 20 years, in which a city has ever turned over control of a majority or otherwise, of controlling what happens to land, that it's, it's purview to zone, to develop. Ultimately, we're getting two votes at a body of 13 people, which is up from zero votes in a body of 13 people. And again, this isn't about control, as much as about participation and collaboration. And I think that the, the lakefront of this community is one of the most important assets this community has, as we face forward in the next 50 years, as to how we may remain vibrant and connected. And so I think there's a lot of good reasons for us to be in this, but I don't want to confuse that somehow by not participating, or if we participated more, that the City of Cleveland was ever going to turn over the right to determine its land use, which I think it probably has by charter. And again, if any council member has an example-
I never suggested that. I never suggested that.
I just wanted to make sure, if you do want, I wanna know.
No, Mr. Webster, if they have control, county doesn't need to pay money to sit at a table and have two meaningless votes when we are so outnumbered. That's the point. Please don't confuse my point. It has nothing to do with land use, and you're right, that's all in the purview of Cleveland. We don't have a say. This, this is meaningless. This is, this is actually meaningless. But thank you, Mr. President.
All right, any further questions? I'm sorry, hold on. Counsel, right, the order is Councilman Schron, Councilman Miller, then Councilwoman Conwell.
Throw Sweeney down if you don't mind.
Then we'll put Councilman Sweeney in.
As you can tell, the structure is an important component-
Sure.
-of what's going on, as far as this discussion up here. Looking at your map, it looks as though you, if I could equate it, the structure, the land as allocated means that basically four to one ratio, is that what I'm looking at?
Roughly, yes.
That takes, I guess, by having problems with, as my colleagues are, that's four to one on the dirt piece. What's the measurement of the dollar piece? That we, the county, have invested in that same chunk of land?
As far as previous investments made?
Yeah, well, we got invested right today. I mean, if you had to put a price tag on the hotel, and you put a price tag on the Convention Center, put a price tag on Mall C, and everything we did to comply with the, the plan, that was all directed by the City of Cleveland, as opposed to building it on up, as far as the way that Convention Center, that was not, nobody would-
Yeah.
Nobody would wanna build a Convention Center like that. Let's all recognize that.
Of course.
That was built in acquiescence to the City of Cleveland.
Sure.
So now, give me a dollar, give me, give me that same percentage based on dollars of these lands.
Well, what I would say is, like, it's hard for me to know-
There's a lot of vacant parking lots that you have in yellow.
Yeah, yeah, no, I agree. And I, and I think that, that's an important distinction, is yes, the county has heavily invested, often in partnership with the city, in doing the Convention Center, doing the hotel. I don't have the numbers in front of me, but certainly it's upwards of, you know, a billion dollars, I think that the county has probably invested in this core area.
So why isn't that worth more on the voting side?
What, what I would say is, this is as much about the potential to the undeveloped land, which is predominantly City of Cleveland property. It's not necessarily a reward for having invested, but it's the potential to see investment in. And, and so, like, I get that the majority piece of this, as to whether we're going to have a majority of this board or not, there are a variety of ways to shake this down, but not putting it in a million-
I wouldn't try to shake it down.
No, 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 yeah, yeah, yeah. Shake down, probably not the best term, you know, I, well, duly noted. But the idea is, we're in for $250,000, they're in for $1 million. I think that's commensurate to what you're going to see need to go forward to actually develop the part that's been hard to develop, which is actually making the infrastructure connection to the lake, and to bring value to the land, which they control, which doesn't yet have value there. You know, that, the parking lots that you're talking about. And so, again, I think that the county's been a great partner to the city in a variety of projects, and we've often helped to fund those projects. But that being said, you know, this is a unique opportunity. It fits into a larger vision that the county has for a more vibrant waterfront on the lake and the river. And we're not coming in at an investment right now, nor do we have to in the future, that is more than that, you know, 20, 25% of the total.
I'm sorry, but I disagree. We have more at risk, because it's our, our valuable properties, that if they screw this thing up, and we are not, we don't have a very strong voice at the table, our hotel, our Convention Center, all of Mall A and B, all that, all that we put into be, be a good supporter of the, of the city, 'cause we followed the Burnham Plan and all those things from 100 years ago, which some of us disagreed with, going down that path, but we, we did that. It seems to me, we've got more at risk than, than they do on these vacant pieces of, of parking lots. And then the other one that really bothers me is, the majority of this land, three-quarters, or more than, probably three-quarters of the yellow land, has a partner that's not even on the table here, which is the FAA.
Sure.
We all know that the City of Cleveland is not gonna control an airport by themselves.
Yeah.
And so to, to give them credit for controlling an airport, that the Federal Aviation is going to control what's gonna go on on that site more than anybody at the table, let's, let's at least give recognition to that, why they get credit for what amounts to probably two-thirds of the land that you have in this yellow sheet.
Sure.
So again, I, I'm having trouble with this, with, with the structural way that this is put together. Let me keep on going down a little, how, how far are we down on this, this Manning chart, sorry, Army term, this organizational chart, where you have an executive director? Have we already started to talk to executive directors?
Not that I'm aware of, no. We have not had an initial meeting. I think we're waiting to see-
Has there been people talked to in this community that are already been identified as potential executive directors?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
Is there any people in this room that maybe can be aware of having these conversations?
That's possible, but I'm not aware of that.
Okay, well, when they get up to the microphone, I'm gonna ask them that question, because it tells me that the planning feels an awful lot like the basketball and the baseball stadium, because we have an underlying organization that we've been dealing with outside of the whole thing, and it looks like we're getting ready to create that. How about the land bridge, what you're talking about here, that you're saying adds value to it? Has there been any discussion about what this, how this drawing would reflect and look like, as far as a land bridge connecting us, so we have a, a good view of, of Canada?
Through the council president or the councilman, I know there's some conceptual plan that was done by James Corner Field Operations that look at that, but it's just that, I believe, a conceptual plan at this point.
Okay, so that's gonna, in fact, impact our buildings immensely, if it's done incorrectly.
Sure.
It just seems to me, the amount of risk that we have, if this is not done correctly, is, is a higher proportion than all the parking lots that are completely sitting vacant right now. Just my thoughts.
All right, Councilman Miller.
Mr. President, thank you, and to Chief Wobbs. I, I have to confess that I have, have a lot of concerns about this, and, and particularly about the, the tendency to create new, non-elected boards that have substantial governmental-like authorities, that, that where it's less accountable to the public and, and less accessible even to the public. And, and my question, my first question is, is will the development corporation and the new community organization, if it's created, will they run through, to open public meetings with, with public comment? And, and will, will the records be available to the public, to public records?
Through the council president to the councilman, I don't know the answer to that question. My understanding, though, that this is a 501(c)(3), which would not subject it, so if they were to do that, it would be a determination that would be made by the board itself, but if the law, oh, the law, the law director, but if anybody else wants to add to that , and I don't know if you know the answer to that question, but my, my guess is that from a legal perspective, as a 501(c)(3), our participation in this as board members or financing would not necessarily subject them to public record scrutiny.
Mr. President, to the chief, to what extent do you anticipate that the, that either the corporation or the new community organization would be involved in, in the process around the lease on the Brown Stadium, since it certainly is squarely within the, the territory that is the subject of this proposal?
Through the council president to the councilman, I've heard nothing from the City of Cleveland that would say that the mayor wants to delegate their authority to be involved in that negotiation. And the county stance has been that that is a conversation between the mayor and the lessee, in that case, the, the Haslam group. So I don't envision this creates any more participation of either this board or the county in that conversation than we would have as a stakeholder as we exist today.
And, Mr. President, to the chief, I'm hearing little rumblings, and I'm hearing various versions of what, what might be proposed, but nothing concrete. Can you confirm that, that there's negotiations currently underway between the Browns and, and one or more public or key private stakeholders regarding, regarding future lease arrangements?
Through the county, council president to the councilman, the county executive stance that's been communicated to both the city and the Browns, is that there is a lease between the city, that there's a stadium that is owned by the city and leased to the Browns, and that those conversations are between those two, to the extent that the city wishes to approach the county about participating, that the city should make that ask. We have had no more, to my knowledge, of anything other than preliminary conceptual conversations, and nothing at a detailed level with the mayor's office.
And, final question, Mr. President, to the chief, can, can you give me some kind of conceptual understanding about, to what extent, decisions about what kind of developments are gonna be done, how they're gonna be done, how they're gonna be financed? Would these decisions be made by one or both of these new entities, or, or would the, the city and the county continue to make those decisions, and, and this entity would be in more of an advisory role? How are these powers gonna be distributed?
Through the council president to the councilman, nothing in this creation of this 501(c)(3) delegates any existing city or county authority to this new organization. A new community authority, which again, would require 100% participation amongst any property, has the potential to do that, but that is not envisioned in this. It's something that could possibly be coming back to this body, and only would come back to this body if, in the event they wanted to include county property in it. The City of Cleveland could create one without county property and would not have to come back. But if they wanted to include any property controlled by the county, they'd have to come back at that time. But nothing that is being asked for consideration to county council today does anything other than provide a three-year funding support, to designate one of the county council president, one of the county executive, and then the potential to have a 50% say in who is selected as the first director of the organization.
Thank you, Mr. President.
At this time, Councilman Conwell.
Finally me. Through the president, two of my questions were asked, but chief, you, you kept mentioning you very explicit, explicit when you stated, keep saying that the county gets to play a role with the first executive director, and you kept saying first. So my question would be, is that the only director that we would have a say?
Yes, it's through the council president to Councilwoman Conwell, it's the initial hire, and then when the board is situated, if that person were to leave that position, then the, the board itself would replace the position.
Thus, we don't really, you know, have that as an authority, because they can quit the next day. So I didn't, I didn't like that part. And when the lakefront development is- Um, and when the lakefront development is complete, is there a sunset to this development corp? Will it be language in regards to that?
There, uh, through the council president or the councilwoman, as of right now, there is a sunset to the county's commitment, which is three years. The Development Corporation does not exist, nor has anything been proposed to create it in a formal way, so any of those limitations on a sunset would have to be determined upon the creation of the actual Development Corporation. But our funding commitment would be limited to this three-year period, and if the county or if the organization wanted to request additional county funding in the future, they'd have to come back and ask for additional support at that time.
Okay, so please restate for me, um, I think Councilwoman Stevens probably needs to hear that, please restate, restate for me, the county's money of $750,000 for a three-year period, what do we benefit?
I think that, looking at this as, this is going to happen with or without the county's participation, we are currently, right now, 250,000 of a minimum 1.25 million, and much likely, a larger budget. I think that this is the county showing the spirit of collaboration to support the city's vision for making a stronger connection to its lakefront, and that the core of the county remains downtown Cleveland. In many ways, the future of the economy of this region is going to be dependent in the future on tapping into the potential of Lake Erie. I think the reason that the county would participate in this at all is because it's important. This will be important work. I don't think there was an option at the table that we could have bought our way into a larger control of this entity, maybe another seat, but I don't think it was gonna be 50% plus. So if county council doesn't want to participate, the city will move forward without us and can come back and ask for resources. That is a choice that this council will make. But I think the county executive thought it was important, and has had some conversations in our meetings with the county council president, that we should participate in this, because it is the center of the region, and it is important to our economy in the future. So I think that's why, I, I think viewing this as, uh, a zero-sum game between the city and the county loses sight that this is one of the most important economic assets that we have in our region, and that we should want to be a part of this. If we choose not to be a part of it, that's okay, that's your choice, but you're making a choice to sit out a very important conversation in future generations.
Well, we've already said in the conversations, as Councilman Schron stated, I mean, we've been good partners with the city of Cleveland over and above board.
I agree.
And most of these buildings, uh, on the lakefront are county-owned buildings, so I think, you know, I'm not gonna squabble about if we should have an extra seat or, or whatever, but I just, you know, feel that, you know, your position of how you, you state that we, we should be grateful, um, to be a part of this conversation, when we have been a part of this conversation, and I'm just concerned that when this organization, I mean, we're already trying to figure out what role GCP plays at, at times in, in conversations that we have, and now we're gonna create another entity, um, doing the same thing. Nothing against GCP, but, you know, it's moving away from the people elect, people to sit in these seats to make decisions. That represents their county interest, their interests, uh, to make these decisions, and I've sat here year after year, and I've seen so, so many times that the county, because they're not, um, uh, specialized in a certain area, that they pass it on to other people to do it, and then we've lost what we were elected to do. I've seen that time and time again. And the only decision that I can possibly agree that occurred that way, that gets to make their own determinations and we give them money, um, was, uh, when we gave to the kids for the scholarship, because they were fortified in knowing what they, you know, what they do. Everybody else, we're just turning away, and then they make decisions on what projects or whatever. That's not what the residents want. They want a government that's going to have the voice and allow us to have community meetings to discuss what their needs are and to bring them here at the table. So I don't wanna down this, I just think personally for me, I need to have a little bit further conversation to envision, I mean, I get what you're doing today, we're just agreeing and giving money, but I think my more concern is future.
Sure.
What, how it will impact us.
And, and if I could just really briefly, I don't disagree that it's important that the county council protect the voice of the people in any of this, but what I will say as someone who has been an executive in government for, you know, 20 years at this point, is when an organization like the county takes on too much operationally, you end up in a situation where you're doing a lot of things, but you're not doing anything as well as it should be done, and I think being strategic as to where to take on direct responsibility for operations, not for decision-making, but for operations or project management, as opposed to where you play a supportive role. One, you bring other resources, whether they're state, federal, private, philanthropic, or municipal into that conversation, and two, you free us up to navigate important issues like HHS, because all of this is a drain on the executive's time, the executive staff's time, et cetera, and, and so this is just, this is one partnership-oriented model that allows us to participate, not to have to drive, and again, it's something that we, we don't necessarily have the ability to drive, even if we chose to, uh, so that's just the, the, the potential. There's upside and downside, I think, but I think your, your initial point is very important. We don't want to take away from the people, the power of the people, but the people do want us to find efficient models to do more and go further together than we would individually on our own.
And I, and I get that, and I don't wanna prolong, because I know we're in a time thing, but I get that, um, but we need to, two previous executives, we were always, and we're learning, we're all in a learning stage with the new one. We've always been given stuff that, you know, buy into this, but never the details were all the way fleshed out.
Sure.
And so I think I'm tired of that, so I just wanna see a lot more detail before we agree to certain things, and this is kinda like the, I wanna say, I'm not a sport, into the sports, was a gateway? The gateway? For decisions that were made so many years ago, when I was a little girl, still 21, guys. It, we, it ties our hands on, when the public stands here before us to say, no more, you know? So I'm just a little leery on something that we're gonna be planning for decades, people that'll sit in these seats. But I'm open, okay? I'm open to hear a little bit more for myself, I just wanted to give my initial thoughts.
Councilwoman Weeny.
Thank you, Mr. President, and Eric Neisainya. I just wanna applaud you, basically, because this is important. I've been 25 years looking at that lakefront myself, you said 100 years, and nothing got done, really. I remember sitting with Mike White through the chair when I first got here, we were putting the Ferris wheel, he was all excited, council wasn't too hip on it, never went anywhere. So how would it look like if county council doesn't pass it and the city of Cleveland passes it, uh, as an authority? How would it operate, would you say?
I think.
Through the chair?
Yeah, through the chair, to the councilman, I think it would operate without the county, and, and, um, my guess is our two seats would be removed, maybe, I, I don't know that for certain.
No, no, not the seat, just functionality. Could they do most everything that this board could do, uh, without the county through the chair?
I don't think there's anything specifically as far as authority that the county brings to this that they'd be unable to do without our participation. I do think it would be a lesser plan without the voice of the county reflected, and I do think, you know, one concern that I've had throughout this process is that we don't only focus on what happens on the lakeside of the bridge, but we focus, just as importantly, on what happens on the downtown side of the bridge, because we all know, working down here regularly, that downtown is in transition right now with the advent of remote work in the wake of the, the pandemic. I think we can protect that interest, I think it's better for us to be there, but I do think this goes on without us, and again, it doesn't mean that they're not gonna come back and potentially ask for infrastructure support or something else later, but we won't have had an opportunity in the same way to help craft those plans if we're not a part of that table.
Thank you for that. Uh, this is lakefront through the chair development, and the Cleveland Browns are a portion of that lakefront.
Yeah.
I just don't wanna get clouded with the discussion about the Browns and the decisions that are being made somewhat soon for both the lease and the renovations, but I wanna be very crystal clear that this is lakefront trying to have an economic engine for the city and the county to just keep improving it.
And, and any, through the chair to the councilman, every conversation that I've been involved in with the city of Cleveland has been that this is about the public benefit first, and to the extent that the Browns, or even the Rock Call, or the Science Center are important stakeholders, similar with the convention center and the hotel on the south side, they're secondary stakeholders to improving public access, and, and one of the way that we improve that public access and that vibrancy for programming is having the appropriate amount of development that doesn't take away the waterfront, but, but allows the revenue generated from that waterfront to pay for the infrastructure and the programming that make this a public amenity. And I, and I do think that is one distinction between planning for the lake and the river as opposed to for stadiums, is that you don't have to buy a ticket to ride a bike on the lake or to come down to a, a free show on the water. While this will trigger, I believe, more development in the long run than any of the stadium investments we've made, this will be a publicly accessible amenity, and I think that there's value in the county being a part of that, and I know the county believes that by virtue of all the other investments you've made in planning for the lakefront, the riverfront already, but, but so, to answer more succinctly, I view this as wholly separate from a conversation between the city and the Browns, and, and I view the county's role in that, to the extent there ever is one, is not being determined in any way by virtue of whether we decide to go forward with this waterfront partnership.
And thank you, just a couple more, through the chair, uh, just, I have a disagreement on having two seats and no voice. I don't wanna disrespect my county executive or my council president. There will be two strong figures on that board, they will be respected, their discussions and their words will be heard, and I believe they'd have a significant influence.
Great.
But it, when you talk about a single vote, when it comes down to it, but just the ability to participate, I believe is critical in the overall development of our lakefront.
I agree, and, and I think the county's largest voice will come at the time when it comes to implementation, because I think what is true is in the past, the county is always one of the, the entities that people look to, to be a partner to that infrastructure. I don't think we're giving away the ability to drive a harder negotiation when it gets to be that time, but I do think that seat at the table for the council and the administration will allow us to not control, but to help shape these plans, uh, as they get made in the next few years.
And through the chair, just on the point of the governor not filling his seats, I'm very familiar with the governor filling seats, so I don't think there'll be a problem with him, uh, filling his seat, and, uh, unlikely that the city would have that opportunity, my opinion. Two very specific questions. When you say through the chair, on the first hire of the executive director, it's a 50/50, so the city has to agree and the county has to agree?
Yes.
County has two seats. If those seats are, have difference of opinion, does it count? Or the city has to be on the same page and the county has to be on the same page with those two votes each, or?
Uh, I'd have to defer.
The seven votes and the two votes.
I don't know technically how that would work, if there was a difference of opinion between the executive and the council president, I don't know. Mr. Maniloff, Director Maniloff, I don't know if you know the answer to that question off the top of your head? Yeah, so we'd have to work that out, but what I can tell you is, uh, I know that the county executive would want to ensure that the council president was in line with that, and I think it's an opportunity to build trust between the branches of the administration and the council.
That's exactly, that's a critical question, because we're putting a lot of weight on the first hire in the partnership, so my thought is the council president and the executive represent the county would have to agree together with the city of Cleveland on that first choice. So it'll be determined.
Through the chair to the councilman, what I can guarantee, without any ability to commit crests, is we will do everything we can to ensure that the council president's voice is, is just as strong in that, and it's a united voice of the county in that selection.
And out of the original budget through the chair, salaries for the folks getting hired?
Uh, through the.
The portion of that, because I'm just.
I haven't seen any salary schedules yet, I know to be competitive, this is gonna be a really strong position, but I, I don't, I don't know where that will be, but my guess is it would be in the range of leadership of other larger development corporations.
I'm just talking about the 100, or 1.25 million dollars that the city and county are putting in, what portion, not identifying people's salaries.
Sure, sure, sure.
Would it be half, you think, or a quarter?
I think, I think in the range of 50% would go towards sort of overhead and staffing, then the other 50% would, looking at operational expenses, including planning, et cetera.
Well, thank you, as I said, I am, uh, looking forward to developing the lakefront in whatever way we can, and I think this is an opportunity to have active participation. And my last tiny question, is there an escape clause in this thing at all? Or the first, in the three years, if something goes?
Well, I know the three, the three-year commitment, I believe, is binding, but the exposure is limited to that 750,000. I'd have to see if there was an annual ability to, to, to come out, but, uh, Rick, I don't know if you know that off the top of your head or not, I apologize, I know.
I'm looking.
Yeah, yeah, but I, I believe it, it would be a commitment of that 750,000 payable, either upfront or each year 250,000, was what it was stated.
Yeah, I'd like to know that, because Dale's our budget.
Yeah.
Is it budgeted for the annual payment or upfront? That's, that's a, that's a number that is, uh.
We can look into that as well.
Is important for our budget for the county, because I've known how the budget is important. Eric, I thank you very much, I'm very confident and comfortable. Are you gonna play through the chair, are you gonna, when you leave, are you gonna consult, until this is completed, or just consult on the first one?
Through the chair to the councilman, none of that's been determined, Chris and I have had some active conversations about volunteer service, or actually, no, nothing is contemplated, which I'd continue to receive any compensation, but I would like to be able to continue in a volunteering capacity on, on any, any board that could make a difference in the county, but there's nothing, nothing's been decided officially, yeah.
Through the chair, thank you, I mean, you've been a stand-up public servant for a long time, and you should be recognized for that.
Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. President.
You did say Debbie Berry is your successor to this role?
Uh, through the, to the chair, she will be the staff, she, she will not likely be the designee on the board, but she will be the person who attends staff briefings for the county executive, yeah.
Councilman Gallagher? It'll be our last question in the open.
Thank you, Mr. President.
I have more questions.
My colleagues have hit just about every one of my concerns, and I, I can tell you, and I know you don't mean it in a derogatory manner, but since I've been here, before I've been here, Cog County's been the best of the partners. As you, as we stated, probably a billion dollars' worth of development downtown, this, this is misnamed, it's not the North Coast Development Corporation, it's the Downtown Cleveland Lakefront Corporation. Without the, without, as Mr. Schrein said, with that, without the airport, I don't, I don't get it. Uh, the most successful of all the partners on the lakefront, starting with Bay Village, Rocky River, Lakewood, Bratnall, and Euclid, who seemingly have been left out of the North Coast, is the Metro Parks, which took over the, the Lakefront Park, and I can remember a time when I was in high school, we wouldn't even go down there, and a gang of guys, it was so dangerous and so unkempt. So the most successful group that's done anything, in my opinion, on the lakefront's been the Metro Parks, and they're not even been a thought of this. Uh, if you're gonna have this, you gotta, you have to have buy-in from Bay Village, Lakewood, Rocky River, Bratnall, Euclid, and the Metro Parks. Uh, I, I don't wanna, you know, swiss cheese the, the North Coast Development Corporation, but I, I just think this has been targeted for one specific area of downtown, which is fine, which is needed, and which is growing, and we've been a big part of that. What made this corner down here, that stadium? Nope. Us moving our employees to this corner. So we're, we're the partner here. We bought, we gave Cleveland $20 million for an unusable hole in the ground, and turned it into the Cleveland Convention Center, and put nickel one into it, and then at the end, they were fighting us on opening it up, over tiki-taki little things, I won't get into that. But this reminds me of, of when we first started, and some of my friends will remember, and some of my new friends up here will not even know, but there came a point in time we started looking at everything when we got elected, and it came a point in time when the folks up at the theater district were coming in looking, sniffing around for some, some dough, and we looked at some of the contracts and leases, and it turns out that we were leasing space in a building attached to the theaters that we owned for a million dollars a year.
Oh, wow.
So I pursued it with Mr. Greenspan and others, and we were quietly told, well, not a big deal. You know who was on that board? Mayor of Cleveland, city council president, nobody from the county, and we don't even know how far back that million-dollar deal went. Couldn't find the paperwork, couldn't find anybody quote-unquote "alive" that could remember how it happened, but I do remember who saved those theaters, and it was Cuyahoga County. Cleveland signed the destruction ticket. So I'm very, very touchy about Cuyahoga County in any way, being looked at as anything but a great partner. That baseball stadium, which I. That baseball stadium, which I proudly state, and the only elected official in the state of Ohio that voted against funding that, and the arena, which we own, Cleveland owns the ballpark, we floated the loans. We floated the nut. I remember getting a thank you for that. So, as you can tell, this is a very active council. We're very concerned about what goes on in Cleveland, because if Cleveland fails, we all fail. And we all know that. And I come from the Southwest District, which is literally unattached, for the most part, from Cleveland. But without Cleveland, my Southwest District falls apart. We're aware of that. This, the way in which this has been structured, the way in which this has been delivered, the way in which the, and we all have friends here. People call us. So, what you know, we probably have an idea what's going on, and other people in this room, you'd be shocked at what we're privy to. And some of the rumors, perception is reality, but some of the rumors become true. And some of the rumors I'm hearing, I don't like. And I just think being above board, and I'm not saying you're not above board or anybody else is, you're just trying to get something done and get it through. Well, as you can see, it looks like you're going back to the drawing board, because this needs to be reworked to a point where this entity is comfortable that another Playhouse District situation will never occur, ever. And God forbid that there won't be any of us alive to answer to those 50 years down the road, who signed such a crazy deal. I think you need, if it's going to be the North Coast, involve the North Coast. Thank you.
All right. So, Eric, we've heard a lot today. I'm not prepared to move forward. We're going to hold in committee. We have a long agenda today as well, much more to deal with as well. So, I'm going to hold it and commit the whole, and we will look to, again, to continue this conversation at a later time.
Thank you, Council President.
Thank you.
Mr. President?
Yes?
I don't have a question. I just want to make clear that this agreement that's before us specifically speaks to the renovation at the Cleveland Browns Football Stadium. So, if there was any question in the mind of any colleague here that this is directed specifically toward that renovation and the county participating, at least upfront in that endeavor?
All right. We will continue the conversation.
Mr. President?
Councilman Miller.
Eric?
No, let's do this.
I just, I just want to take a moment of personal privilege to say that it's really been a pleasure working with you and that you've provided outstanding service to Cuyahoga County and in many other places. And I just want to wish you the very best of success. Thank you.
All right. We'll continue on. Thank you, Eric.
I as well. I'll add my name to that resolution. Thanks, Eric.
Goodbye. Sorry to see you go.
Council President?
Council...
I just want the record to reflect that Ms. Stevens is in attendance.
All right.
Madam Clerk, if you read the following items, in fact, read all of them consecutively into the record.
Resolution 2023-0182, authorizing a real estate purchase agreement with Craig Realty Group Cleveland LLC or its designee in an amount not to exceed $38,703,000 for the purchase of certain parcels of real property in Garfield Heights, Ohio, with access to Granger Road totaling approximately 72.1 acres, now known as permanent parcel numbers 542-14-004, 54215-002, and 5422-022, and a portion of permanent parcel number 542-14-002. Ordinance 2023-012, amending and codifying Board of County Commissioners Resolution Number 2007-073101 dated July 26, 2007, and enacting new chapter 727, section 727.01 of the Cuyahoga County Code to change the period of time during which the county sales tax shall be levied at the aggregate rate of 1 and 1/4%. Ordinance 2023-013, amending and codifying Board of County Commissioners Resolution Number 2007-073102 dated July 26, 2007, and enacting new chapter 727, section 727.02 of the Cuyahoga County Code to change the period of time during which the county sales, the county use tax shall be levied at the aggregate rate of 1 and 1/4%.
Good afternoon. Mike Chambers, fiscal officer. Once again, to follow up our conversation on the two resolutions, we view them both going together as a package. At this time, we do have a little bit of a presentation. With me for the record is Bob Franz and Walter Parfeyawitz. And while they're pulling it up, I will just say the same thing I said before. It's virtually the similar presentation that we had at the same time last year. And the mechanism, once again, is the purchase of the property along with the extension of the sales tax, as noted. I'm going to turn it over to Bob for a quick recap, and then we'll be here to answer questions.
Council President, County Council, Bob Franz, Managing Director, Steve Nicholas, and County's Financial Advisor. We briefly went over some discussion points about debt capacity last presentation, so I just wanted to not go through that again, but just refresh everyone's memory. Again, very similar message. We have the legal capacity to issue additional debt obligations, but not necessarily the affordability to pay off those additional debt obligations. So, just wanted to quickly state those. On the slide and on the presentation here, it's called Financing Plan Overview and Objectives. And before I go into kind of the assumptions and how we really came about to the illustrations in this, just wanted to briefly state, you know, nothing is being recommended in terms of this is what we are going to do or this is what we want to do right now. There's a lot of details that have yet to be understood. How a financing could be determined and structured depends a lot on the ultimate project, the project schedule, how the construction financing mechanisms are kind of constructed. So, what I'm going to talk about are some assumptions, and hopefully this places the project and the affordability and context. And hopefully, the next, you know, eight, 10 months, six months, however long it takes to get the project details ironed out, we will come back to County Council with a recommended plan of finance and how to execute the financing. But again, these are just an illustration of what it could be and trying to place everything in context for discussion purposes. So, the, a lot of the assumptions here are very similar to past discussions, you know, a total project budget of $750 million. We're going to fund it sometime in mid-2024. Again, assumptions, we don't really know yet. To, in order to fund the project, we're proposing to extend the 1/4% sales tax that expires in 2027. Council used a portion of the ARPA money to segregate that into a separate fund in the general fund of $53.6. So, again, $53.6 million going into the project. And similar to the prior estimated savings, from operational savings from the jail, again, we don't know what those are yet, but we're still just estimating $9 million based on the last project. For the current 1/4% sales tax, again, implemented in 2007, expires in 2027, currently funds obligations for the convention center, the Hilton Hotel, and a small portion for the Cavaliers deal. No current or expected obligations exist past 2027. So, I think that's pretty important to know when we talk about this. The extension of the sales tax, what we're estimating right now, is a three-year average of $58.5 million. And when we're, when we start talking about how to kind of construct the financing and what are the sensitivities and what are we trying to get to, well, first and foremost, we need to fund the project. But we want to minimize the rest of this county in aggregate. And when we talk about, and the next slide here will show some estimates, but...
Mr. President, can I ask one question?
Please.
What's the definition of this project for $750 mil? Is it this campus? Is it just the jail? What exactly is, can you please define the project?
Public Works.
Before we go on.
Michael Dever, Director of Public Works, Cuyahoga County. So, the definition, the $750 million, is the detention center, the jail, or the sheriff And that's the outline of it.
So, the $750 million defined project includes specifically the jail you're calling a detention center?
Yes.
Okay. The jail that we're calling a detention center and the sheriff office?
Sheriff Administration.
That would have been incorporated into whatever plan we originally had.
That's correct.
Okay. So, the project itself, that's it. Okay. Thank you.
Mr. President?
Mr. President? The end today, I asked, is there any...
Ms. Stevens, if you could turn your microphone on. Thank you.
About the destruction costs, and we were told there's a 15% increase in costs. And along with the $40 million, that means we're looking at an $802 million cost as opposed to $750.
Well, we envisioned, there was $53 million that was directed towards ARPA general fund dollars that was moved over to the, basically a jail courthouse fund. We foresee utilizing those dollars for the purchase of the property, that $38 point...
But it's not a wash, it's a cost.
It's a cost. True.
So, the total project cost should be established before you subtract out the other funds. I'm just saying, that's the basic way you do it. You don't subtract out every time you get a new source of funding. You have your total costs and then your total sources.
So, we envisioned it as a $750 million project, which included the purchase of the property. So, that is the $38.9 million, obviously, we're utilizing a separate funding source for that.
Mike, is your microphone on?
Yes, it is. Sorry.
And just repeating her question, she's saying $750 million, you mentioned 15% increase. In other words, is the total project $750 or is it over $800 million? Just...
All right.
Jeff Applebaum, consultant to the county. Just to clarify the numbers.
Mr. Applebaum, can you speak a little louder into the microphone, please?
Jeff Applebaum.
Thank you.
Consultant of the county. Sorry about that. The numbers that are being used right now, so what is being used, and just to be clear, the $750 is the last number that we ended with in October of last year. So, of that number, it does include property at $750. So, you do not escalate, there's portions of the $750 you do not escalate. You only escalate a portion of what's in the $750. The portion that has escalated since October, the escalation on an annual basis right now is a little, just slightly under 5% a year. So, you pick the date that you're escalating to, and of course, that's not clear right now. But if it's a full year, then you're taking a portion of that $750, which is probably closer to about $650. You're, could be $680, but you're escalating that by about 5% if the delay was a year. Now, you know, that's before you actually go through the process then of looking more specifically at the design, determining what you might adjust in it. But that's where that number comes from. There's no more to it than that. It's simply taking that number as an assumption as you move forward.
So, the cost is more than $750?
If you were to take exactly what you had last October...
Yes, $750.
There's been escalation.
Right. Then why, okay. So, it's more than $750?
If it's that $750, if you use $750 as a budget, you then have to figure out what you're going to modify.
Well, this presentation states that the cost of the project is $750. And I asked what the project consists of, and I was told the detention center, that it incorporates the sheriffs, and it was $750. But it's really not $750, because there's been inflation from last October.
And the only thing I would say, Councilwoman, is that the cost is not, I think the term is the budget. The budget for the project at this point would be $750.
Okay. Well, okay, we can split hairs, but I'm presented with a project right now that I was told was $750. And I know that that can't be a flat amount from last October. So, I'm glad you clarified that, actually. Thank you, that there is an escalation, at least a portion of that.
Okay. So, let's do this. Let's continue.
Thank you. Sorry, 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 Council President.
So, just to restart there, and go to the next page. So, we're separating the time period and how I look at this and how we collectively look at this as the pre-extension period from, you know, 2023, 2024 through 2027, and then from 2028 and beyond. So, at 40 years, that's 2063. So, what we're trying to do here is fund the project, minimize any cost, and we'll do everything we possibly can, but based on these assumptions, which will change and be refined, we're looking at approximately $21 million from the general fund from the county during that pre-period, during that '24 to '27 period. Now, again, we will do everything we possibly can to reduce that. But we had to make some assumptions, and without knowing how the construction schedule works out, you know, just wanted to present a more conservative viewpoint on this. Now, hopefully, we can eliminate that through some techniques, but it ultimately just depends on how the construction schedule works out, which we don't know yet. And then from 2028 through 2063, we're looking at about $51 million a year in annual debts and costs. And what we're really trying to do by minimizing that time period from '24 to '27, we're pushing as much principal off as we can, and we are capitalizing interest. So, that does add some cost to the financing overall. But with any bond issue, with any, you know, home mortgage, we're taking future money and taking it today. So, by structuring the bond issue, we're trying to minimize the impact to the county's general fund in the immediate future to limit impact to the general fund. So, in a nutshell, that's kind of it. I mean, I know there's a lot there, but just wanted to walk through those assumptions, the financing structure. And again, we'll be back to you in hopefully the near future with a well more defined financing plan, but it's kind of what we're working on.
All right. That's your presentation. If you're ready for questions?
Yep.
We'll begin with Councilman Schran and then Councilman Miller.
Would anything on this piece of paper and the bond issue and how it's being paid back and all the scheduling be any different, any different if we presented this to the voters and they voted to approve exactly what you were telling us we should do without the vote of the voters?
I want to make sure I understand the question. If everything's...
It's real simple. Instead of us not presenting this to the voters as far as the extension of the tax, we just ask the voters whether they would support the extension of the tax.
I mean, the facts we just presented are the same no matter what. I mean...
That's my point.
It's just time.
That's my point exactly, that it does not change one penny of the schedules that you have written on this if you get the voters to support exactly the extension of this tax as opposed to this body extending it without the benefit of the voters.
I will say this, it's as good as we just presented today. I mean, time... I mean, time is, Councilman Gallagher, everyone knows, it's going to change all of it. Ideally, this is identical presentation, only thing is, we'll be lost another year. But I hear what you're saying, it's just time would be the issue, and then time sometimes turns into money.
No, 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 no. It's not just time, it's participation of the citizenry. Don't equate that without, just by purely time.
Once again, you're going to bring it to the voters, that does take time.
I recognize that, yeah, we're...
We're not on the ballot this moment for this issue at this point in time. I mean, right now, the numbers we gave you are based on our best estimate as of right now.
Councilman Miller.
Mr. President, to Mr. France, could you explain about delay of principal and capitalize interest? How does that work? And is that just for the four years between 2024 and 2027? And can you give some estimate of how much that adds to the total financing cost?
Councilman Miller, through the President. Think about as a home mortgage, just trying to provide analogy. You have principal and interest every year. So by delaying the principal and capitalizing the interest, you're pushing that principal back, so you're not paying any principal at all, or very, as little as you can. So you're minimizing your impact on the immediate years, and then you're kind of throwing that to the rest of the loan structure, to the loan term. When you capitalize interest, you're, it's something that I'm not a fan of unless you have to do it. And in this case, you're, taking a step back, capitalize interest, all you're doing is borrowing money to pay it back. So it's a true cost. Like I said, I'm not a fan of it because it does increase costs, but if it's the right, if it's the right technique for the right reason, I'm a fan of it. So in this case, we don't have a ton of money between now and 2027 for this purpose. And being a lot of money, it's approximately 130 million. If we just did a level debt service basis, no structuring principal, between '24 and '27, we would need approximately $130 million instead of the '21. By delaying that principal and pushing it back, that costs some money. By layering on the additional capitalized interest, that does cost money. How much? It ultimately depends on all the assumptions, but on these numbers and these structures, it's approximately, I think it's approximately $270 million over the life of the deal comparing principal and interest of the one deal compared to principal and interest over the other deal.
Okay, so basically, you're delaying the payment of most of the principal and the interest during the pre-2028 timeframe, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. And my second question, and this might be to Director Dever more than, but we'll see. My question is, at what point would the financing plan be submitted to council and would it likely to be prior to when the construction contract is submitted, or would it likely be later than when the construction contract is submitted?
Yeah, I mean, in...
We foresee this as not the initial construction contract, but when we get to the guaranteed maximum price, that's when I believe the financing, the exact budget for the, or the cost for the project will come before you.
So it would be essentially simultaneously with the GMP contract?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. So how much bonding capacity would we have left after this? I mean, how does that shake out?
So, under these assumptions, again, assumptions, and I'm sorry for that, but we have approximately 1.3, I'm sorry, 1.2 to 1.3 billion between our general obligation capacity and sales tax capacity. So if we assume that these are a general obligation issue, then we're looking at, you know, $500 million left in that, assuming static everything else. There's also, and we briefly talked about this, about kind of that lease structure of how that could possibly play in. I mean, those, technically, those are exempt from statute-driven debt limitations, but that doesn't mean that the county doesn't treat it as debt, or a long-term obligation or debt obligation. Auditors treat it as debt, investors treat it as debt, bond rating agencies treat it as debt. So practically speaking, it's debt. For all intents and purposes of, you know, legal and higher revised code, statute, and debt limitations of that kind, it's exempt. There is no limitation. It's more of affordability and kind of a collective assessment of, you know, debt burden for the county in general.
So if we were to proceed with this proposal in its loose format, we wouldn't only have 500, what did you say, million perhaps, available through bonding, assuming all this goes forward?
Councilwoman, under these assumptions, and again, yes, between the sales tax credit and the GO, but there's always flexibility.
So this council, and this isn't for you to answer, but obviously, the council's looking at building a courthouse, building things on this campus, other than that which is necessary, I think, to what's, there's not enough money to fund all these projects as you just stated, unless there's other sources.
I don't think Mr. France is saying that, and let's understand a couple of things. One, Bob says general here, I mean, he knows his reputation is here, and the interest rates can spike, so he's trying to be conservative.
I know, of course.
But to say, to ask, you know, him whether we can do something or not...
Well, I asked, maybe it was for, maybe I did state that maybe he's not the person to answer, what about you?
But I will tell you this, anything that we do bring before you, like we've done many times in the past, we will bring a funding plan.
Well, you know...
And you're making assumptions on what it's going to be, and we don't know at this point in time. I know there's an RFP going out for potentially some future court issues or court-related things.
Right.
But until those numbers come back, you know, throwing dollars out here, I don't think is 100% in the county's best interest of what's available left over. I think we should wait to see what the RFP...
Wait, what? Are you saying that we're sending out RFPs to look at a courthouse and relocating that courthouse, but we as a council shouldn't, we shouldn't be looking at the big picture and how all this funding is going to support these projects that are coming before us? Is that what you're saying, that we shouldn't be asking these questions at this time?
I'm not saying that. I'm saying every project we've ever brought before you, we've came with a solid funding plan for the four or five years I've been here. I'm just saying you're asking Bob to make a yes/no question.
No, I just asked Bob what the capacity was going to be left over, and he came up with a number that I understand is flexible, but based upon what we're hearing today, you're presenting this as a way to go forward, and the way to go forward that you've presented us with does not leave enough money to fund other projects, and I ask, perhaps we're looking at other sources to do that.
No, I think the only other project that I was referring to, and we know the same thing we were talking about last year, was the courts. And I think that's what I'm referring to. When that time comes, we will bring something before you.
Well, you know, what's before us now is a campus, and that campus, as we were told last time, our last meeting, included, we're buying 40 acres that, or 70 acres, 40 more than we need for this project, because the project has defined as this detention center and a sheriff office incorporated. So that's, but now we're asked to purchase 40 extra acres for more money, and we were told the reason for that is to build a campus, and you're telling me that right now, the funding leaves us with very little money to build such a thing? And I'm just making a statement.
So the intent is, the intent always was, we needed a new jail. There is an opportunity before us now, and that's why we foresee this large campus, we are looking squarely at funding the cost of the jail detention center and the sheriff administration. There are other ancillary services or complementary services that we believe could be at this campus, such as diversion center, such as the EOC. We will, if those items move forward, there's an opportunity to purchase the property now. But in the future, we would come back asking for potentially the diversion center, potentially the EOC, which we looked at at one time being out in Broadview Heights. Those would have separate funding streams.
Mr. Dever, how much is the anticipated cost of the diversion center?
The, we don't have, we don't have...
You don't have that, but we're buying land, and you want this council to acquiesce to buy land without a plan or a funding mechanism to support that? At this point, we don't even have a funding mechanism to support the building of the project. I'm just saying, you don't need to answer that. But, Mr. President, I have last question for Mr. Chambers, and I want to move on for other colleagues. But I asked you a question last meeting, fiscal officer, whether you thought it was prudent as the chief fiscal officer of the county for this administration to purchase land out of the fund, 40 million out of the ARPA dollars, and purchase this land, to sit on it without a funding mechanism to build the jail, the diversion center, the campus, all of that? Is that prudent to buy property and without a funding mechanism to build these things?
And I'm going to say the pretty much the same thing I said last time, and I know you will agree to disagree. We're proposing two items at the same time. You're the legislative body, the authority, it's your policy, it's your decision. If you ask me if I'm prudent, I think it's prudent if we don't do something. We need a jail, we need something done, we know that. That's my...
Well, is it prudent to buy acres we don't need or have a funding source?
Once again, that's a policy decision.
Okay. So do you think it makes sense, and, Mr. President, I'm finished for now, after this, that the sales tax issue go first then, to see if we do have the funding to do this, and then we can make a decision fiscally whether we should purchase property?
Once again, they're being presented together.
Okay, you're the fiscal officer, I'm going to let this go. I'm going to pass through, I'm going to pass through to the President and other colleagues.
If I could just follow up on that, too. I think it's very clear, we have an opportunity to buy a parcel of land right now that is available and suits the needs. We've made it, there's been a collective decision that we need a new jail. So we've gone to the point of identifying the parcel of property, so we're prepared, we've got a willing seller to us to move forward.
Of course we do. Of course we do. And lastly...
So I'm just responding to you. That there is a parcel that's available today, but will it be available...
Forty acres more than we need.
But will it be available in the future?
At this time, Councilman Gallagher, then Councilman Kelly, and then Councilman Tuma. All right, one at a time. Go ahead, Gallagher.
Gee, I thought we...
Real excited, I understand, real excited, yes.
I thought we had this all settled in October, which we did, and somehow these numbers keep going up. I just want to remind everybody in the room, and Mike, you correct me if I'm wrong, I believe when you did that overall justice center review, I think it was the 13 or 14?
Start the initial one?
Yeah.
Started the process, yes, sir.
13. So the jail at that time, and I'm just going to throw a dart in the dark, $400 million. When we left, when we abdicated our authority to that committee, and as predicted and on time, it failed, and when that started, it was 499, 499 in '18, '19, '20, '21, '22, '23, 499. Now we're being told 750. I wish I could get on MGM's gambling site and put some money on that one. So in five years, we've gone from 499, and that was a lock-in number on the jail. We're now at 750. It's $251 million we have crapped away, and we look at $2.5 million a month. Mike, you're right. By further discussing this, we are losing money. We are losing tons of money. And I don't know what the solution is. It was in October, what it is now, I don't know. I'm hearing, not reading, in The Plain Dealer, the very learned editor of The Plain Dealer and his podcast was saying that the executive forwarded a well-thought-out plan for Garfield Heights. I saw pink buildings, squares, and blue squares, and a field of whatever, a running track, well-thought-out evidently, but not shared with us. As we sit here and lose $2.5 million a month, so I think we're at the point where we're going to have to either make a determination on what we want to do, regardless of what we decide, because the executive is saying, this is my plan, my only plan, it's now in the hands of council. I take that seriously. I think we need to make a decision on what to do and just do it. We're going to bond this thing for 750, and we're hanging, letting hangfire the Justice Center. That was taken care of in October. That was all included, now it's not. So we, this is, this was a mess. It was a mess in '13, it was a mess in '14, it was a mess in '18. We accelerated the mess by abdicating our position, and that's on us and the executive at the time, and now here we are again with a bigger mess. And I just keep seeing $2.5 million a month going out that window, and I don't know who really cares. I don't have plans in front of me that are well-thought-out. I know we need a jail, we all know we need a jail. I could care less on where it goes. And I told the executive, I go back down to the quote-unquote tainted site, out of the mouths of babes, with no expert, no expert agreeing with that, none. The expert agreed with us, but because of political pressures, we backed off, and here we sit. So council, let's take the reins, let's run this thing, lay it on me, I'll take it, I'm old enough, I can take it, you're not going to get me, you're just not. So let's get this done. $2.5 million. We've got people out here that are going to talk at our council meeting, not even understanding that we're losing $2.5 million a month on something they probably don't want, that they're going to get because we have to, because we have a responsibility. So council, president, vice president, let's go.
Councilman Kelly, floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. To the conglomerate out here. I'm having an issue with the taxes. The, did the administration think about, I know there was stuff during the campaign and all that, but did they seriously consider putting the taxes on the ballot for let the people decide if they want their use tax or sales tax to go up or to be continued for 40 years? And you wouldn't finance your house for 40 years. Makes no sense, but...
I mean, the, it was always presented as coming before the council for the approval.
Okay.
I can't speak for what they did or planned or didn't.
If I may, Brendan Doyle, county executive staff, the county executive's position has been that when the proposal last year was for the extension of the sales tax to be permanent, he believed that that should be an issue that should be put to the voters. He is, he believed the permanency of that, that sales tax was something that the voters should decide. It's his position today that the proposed 40-year extension is something that he is believing that, that he's proposed and believes that this body should support in order to support the critical need of... support the critical need of building a new jail. So that's been the county executive's position.
President to Mr. Doyle. So looking around the room, and I'm at the top end anyhow, I'm not sure in 40 years how many people will be here to see what happens when this, these two taxes reach the end. So I think to almost most of us, it is permanent. And I think it should go in front of the people to vote. That's just my opinion. Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilwoman Stevens, and then Councilman...
Well, I still have a problem with the price of the land, $550,000 an acre, for land that hasn't sold in the marketplace, that doesn't justify that 550 price. So if that's, it's the most expensive land we'll ever take a look at buying, and I don't understand why we have to buy more of it when we haven't seen a plan for how we could use it for the, this central campus concept. So I, you know, most of us, when we shop for houses, we try to find something that is affordable, and we negotiate with people when it's a good site. They haven't moved any off of the original price, and we have discussed the fact that this land hasn't sold in years. So I just wanted to get on the record that I have a problem with the highest price point for each parcel of land.
If I may, Mr. President, Ryan Jeffers, CBRE, the county's real estate consultant, to the president, to the councilwoman, through the president to the councilwoman. Councilwoman Stevens, you brought up a pretty relevant example that I just, we talked about it a little bit in our last conversation about this up here, that when you're buying a home, which is a real estate transaction that most people can relate to very, very well, you don't have a discussion with the seller or the broker about what the trench out by the roadway is priced at as part of the price of the home that takes on the sewer and the stormwater runoff on the house, but you know you need it. And you don't have a negotiation about what the setbacks are on the sides of the house and that portion of land that you may or may not be able to put your fence posts in, and the other areas where you have utility easements that you can't put the house on, but you know you need those for the house. And I know that I'm speaking to somebody who in this room has a better sense of development than just about everybody else.
Well, more and more people, to Mr. President, are negotiating those kinds of things when they buy land. And for example, when somebody says to you, I need to get $150,000 out of this house because I put in a new kitchen and a new bathroom, that is part of the justification for it. And you respond back, yeah, but you put that in 10 years ago, so its value is not as high as when you originally put it in. And so somewhere in the middle, there's a meeting of the minds. And I just, I don't hear a negotiation on the price point.
And that's a relevant discussion about an existing constructed building and not a development site. And as we talked about, development sites need to have land that doesn't, especially in the suburban areas, need to have land that don't have vertical structures, so that you leave room for the utilities. If you don't have stormwater runoff control, if you don't have utility paths, if you don't have driveways, if you don't have setbacks, you don't have a functioning development campus. These are all part of what you need to do to create a suburban campus. And so when we talk about the land and the site, these elements of it are still important and necessary to make the whole thing function. And it does turn out that as we look at some of these portions of the land where you wouldn't put a vertical structure, it's actually more cost-conscious to put some of those things like the stormwater retention and the utilities in those areas of the property, because it's less expensive to construct, it's not interfering with the building, it creates a lower ongoing maintenance cost. And I just, I want to remind us all of that, because as we look at it, we look at this holistically, that the price of this property has always been, when we've talked about it in our evaluations, we presented it in executive sessions, we've talked to you about it for a number of years now, we've always talked about the overall cost of the site. I can't speak necessarily for the executive, and, you know, but I do know that the concept here with the larger site and the additional acreage that is buildable is about a strategic opportunity for a price point that is aligned with the overall price point that we looked at in 2022. When you looked at land, environmental, foundational, and you added all of those things up, you're talking about a comparable price point, but a strategic opportunity to acquire more now. And again, I'm not the executive, but that's the reason behind it.
Councilman Tuma.
Thank you, Mr. President. To the panel, I suppose, here. So you mentioned, you know, it's a strategic opportunity, but it's only a strategic opportunity if you can afford it. So looking at, looking at the extension of the sales tax, it's questionable as to whether we can afford that amount right now with the Justice Center issue on the back burner, because that's a real thing that's out there. We know it's going to have to happen at some point. So my question is to you, has the executive or anybody in public works, Mr. Dever, have you approached the seller with a potential, maybe shoring down of that number of acreage there for something like an option to buy or a right of first refusal? So that way you, you know, the executive can have his vision, and if we can get concrete numbers moving forward, we address that as we move forward. Because right now, I just, I just think this site is in danger for many reasons of, you know, of not moving forward because of a refusal to come to the table with council and try to negotiate something that might not be everything the executive wants, but it could be something that he gets if he's just willing, you know, to shore that big plan down. Mr. Dever, you mentioned a jail and an administrative, administration center on that site. Like, couldn't we just start with a jail and an administration center? I mean, we, you know, we've not even talked about doing a diversion center anywhere else at this point. That's an entirely different discussion. And it's great to have big plans and big ideas, but you've got to walk before you can run. And I just think in this instance, trying to be reasonable here, trying to be rational, you know, and I've asked, I mean, can't you guys look at reducing the number of, you know, acreage that we're potentially looking at buying? And I understand the opportunity, I understand that's there. But, you know, again, we're a big player in this, in this county. So, I mean, I think, I think we, you know, the opportunity will be there in the future. So I'll let you speak.
Yeah, so in regards to the site, yes, we believe we need the larger site. We believe that more horizontal-style campus is, I think, an agreement amongst this council, that it needs to happen in regards to detention, the jail. We believe these other services that have an opportunity, and once again, I think we have the opportunity now, because we are trying to purchase the entire site, to do the buy, and then in, hopefully within the next few years here, we make a decision to bring those amenities into it. I just believe that it's, it's the right time for us to move forward with this, to try and capture the entire campus. Once again, this is a horizontal-type facility. It will take up a significant portion, detention and jail administration will take up a significant portion of the overall site that we're proposing. So we believe we, if we get these few additional acres, this just enhances...
Forty? Forty's a few? I'm sorry. Thirty? Sorry, Mr. President.
Jeff Applebaum, there's a misconception about the acreage. So I want to go through this with some numbers to make this clear. And this has nothing to do with what else you would do on the site. I'm focused on the jail, I'm focused on the program we had before, I'm focused on everything Mr. Gallagher says, and the money, so...
Wait, Mr. President, are you a consultant still for the administration? I just want to know in what capacity you're speaking.
My contract was extended. So I am speaking as a consultant to the county.
To the executive?
I don't know what that means. My contract's with the county.
And how, how long is that extended?
Mike, but the contract I had before, the timeframe was extended, I mean, Nicole, you can speak to that. But it was extended. I don't, I don't have...
Okay. Somebody today, Mr. President, I'd like to know what this, what's going on there and where this money came from. Okay, but go ahead.
There's no new money in the contract. My duration has been extended, not my compensation.
Is order represented in service?
So my services continue on, but there's no increase, I have not, there's no increase in compensation. But let me, let me, let me just make a couple of points, because I'm not here to, I'm here to give you some very narrow but clear information. The 40 acres, when we talked about this site before, and if you go back and look at the RFQ, the RFP for the site, it was because we kept it consistent with what we did with the minimum acres. The minimum acreage was always 40 acres. The RFP, when it came back, said, we will offer you these 40 acres, but you have to also look at the, you need to drain the site. And so there's this, there's the retention basin area next to it. Ryan will speak to this, but I believe that the ability to purchase this site is dependent. I don't think you can purchase the site, first of all, without that retention area, and I also don't think you would necessarily want to. So the bottom line is that when you talk about 72 acres, it's the original 40 acres. There's 18 acres of this retention basin that is not billable. So what you actually have is 58 acres, plus, at 72, it's an additional 14 buildable acres. So you're really going from 40 to 50, about 54, or if I do that right. But it's 72 minus 18, okay? Now, the building itself, to do this optimally and forget about other functions, Councilman Schron, this was the conversation you and I started last time. Right now, even to fit that building onto 40 acres, whether it was this 40-acre site or 40 acres over in Cleveland where we looked at, the way it was stacked up, it was actually the ideal two-over-two over a two-level podium. It was more vertical, there's a two-level podium. On this site, and we can still, you know, do it, we can still condense it, we can make it taller, we can still have structured parking on 40 acres, but if you can extend this onto some of those acres without any more functionality, what you're able to do is you're able to lower the building, there are certain aspects, and part of it will still, can still be over a podium, but part of that podium comes out. And by the way, when we talked about the 750 budget, it is possible that some of the costs can go down, because this will be less of a construction cost. I don't know how much, but it can be less. So number one, you are going to flatten the building, which takes some of the property, that's part of it. Number two, you don't have structured parking. On 40 acres, you had structured parking. Now you can eliminate, you can have more economical parking if you have a little bit more acreage. And the final thing is, if you have the detention facility in back, now what you're able to do is have detention basins or retention basins. Otherwise, you have underground detention or retention. So to give you an example, if we built on 40 acres and had a parking structure there, and we had to do detention, you know, detention tanks facility underneath the parking structure, that's about $3 million. Now, it's not as much as the property, but on the other hand, then you have to maintain it, you have to operate it, year after year, you have risk with it. So there is an advantage to getting more than the 40 acres, and frankly, more than the 40 plus 18 acres in back. There's an advantage to continuing to get that acreage, because that is less expensive than it is to actually have increased construction cost. And it has, and for me, that is, it's a relevant, there's other relevance to what else you might want to do on property, but just for these reasons alone, having the bigger property is important for the project. Who had the floor?
So, listen, I understand the argument regarding the retention basin, but what about the cost per acreage, though? Why, I mean, you know, why, why isn't it less per acre if we're getting more?
Again, I think, number one, it's not half, it hasn't been slashed in that way, but I think it's important that we recognize that the price per acre, if you back into it, which is truly what is happening here, it wasn't, this land wasn't marketed on a shelf in a store where we could buy it at a certain price and take it through a checkout. This was an overall negotiation based upon areas and portions of the property. Certainly, the property on the west side is a lower-value property, and towards transportation, it's a higher-value property, because it has more kind of traditional commercial value. But it was never negotiated as an off-the-shelf per acre, and in fact, if you look at it today, what you have in front of you is less than what was proposed in the, in the original offer in January of 2022. Again, it's not slashed in half, that's fair, but it was very clear that because it's a clean, more buildable, and more horizontally developable site, that overall, as we evaluated it, because we looked at everything holistically, you will remember in executive sessions, in fact, those executive sessions where we talked about and showed you the price of the western land as part of the deal, we talked about how we were evaluating all these things like environmental, like the foundations, like the, the land itself, and we showed those as a buildup cost and why this site compared favorably. So when you talk about it as a per acre, one, I want us to all remember, the way you have in front of you is lower than what was originally proposed. That's not how the deal got negotiated, as a off-the-shelf, take as many acres as you want, and that's really not how a complex negotiation on a site like this would work. I will also say, for whatever it is worth, you have in front of you a pretty, the pricing is not the cheapest property that's out there, but it is a very good property. And the pricing on the land itself is not the cheapest property out there, but it's a very good property, it's very buildable, it's environmentally clean. Overall, this equates to a comparable or a lower cost than the other sites that were ranked high and placed in front of the administration and the council.
Right. So is there, is there a, and maybe this is to Mr. Dever, is there a Plan B from the executive if this Garfield site is not conducive to what council wants to do? Is there a Plan B, or is this take-it-or-leave-it proposition?
No, our intent is, this, this is the site we believe the county should be at.
Yeah. Isn't, isn't there a concern, though, that we're bidding against ourselves, and if we had other sites out there, we could be, you know...
Well, we've been going through this exercise for a number of years.
Yes, I know, unfortunately.
We put out an RFP. We were fortunate enough to get a proposal that is located directly in the middle of the county, which helps us tremendously. This is the site we believe this is where the detention center should go to.
All right, well, I appreciate that. I mean, I, Mike, I have a big concern about the costs increasing on a consistent basis here. And I understand the executive made some comments in, you know, when he was running for election, he's not the first public official ever to do that. I didn't like his comments, and I did, I do think they disrupted our, you know, our agreement, our deal. But, you know, I think we're in a position here where we have to start looking, moving forward from whatever was said or whatever was done here. You know, again, I don't know that this is, you know, the only, sometimes when you put only one plan forward, it's a little difficult to, you know, to juxtapose it against something else. We had another site out there. But again, I think we need, I think we need to move forward, and we need to, you know, zero in on a site, whether it's, whether it's this one or the one that we were looking at, you know, which would need some cleanup. But I just think every day, we're just tick-toc-ing away money here, you know, and that's important. And we're, in last, one thing I do want to say, the 40 years, that, to me, too, is a life sentence. I don't know if there's any way of getting, of getting that, you know, reduced somehow, you know, even if you're looking at 30 years, 25 years, I don't know if there's any possibility of that. That just seems like an awful long time to strap a future council, a future administration with.
To the president, to the councilmen, once again, the 40 years gives us the maximum flexibility. As we get a little more closer to this thing, we will realize, maybe we can do it a little bit cheaper, or at a certain time in the future, we can always roll back a few years. But this is, right now, is, Mr. France, our conservative approach to this thing. Once we get a little closer, we'll see where the numbers lie, what the interest rate is, and yes, you know, we're asking for 40 to give us maximum flexibility.
All right, thank you. All right. The order now is Councilman Jack Schron, then Councilwoman Sunny Simon, and then Councilman Marty Sweeney.
One of the questions that seems to keep coming up is whether we're buying excess land. So I just want to make sure I understand what the definition of excess is. Total acreage is what on the Garfield site?
So on the Garfield site...
Total acreage that we'd be buying based on the proposal?
We're proposing to purchase 72.1 acres.
Okay, so 70...
Okay, so 70, and we just heard from a consultant that says the optimum way to build a jail to include everything that we need is going to be 52 acres, I think, is what I thought I heard. I'm just reiterating what I heard. So 72 minus 52 means we're buying 20 extra acres, and of the 72, 20 acres represents roughly 25% of that package? Is that my, I'm just trying to do the numbers on it.
I would never correct you, Councilman, but...
You can correct me all day long if I'm wrong. I'm just trying to repeat what I thought I heard.
Okay, then you're wrong.
Okay, then tell me what I heard.
What I said was, right now, in the 72 acres, there are 18, approximately 18 acres that are unbuildable. The original 40 acres didn't include any of that unbuildable, but the RFP said that, you know, and I don't, you tell me how it said it, but it referenced that additional property.
Yeah, and I would really caution against saying unbuildable, but it's not as buildable because it goes on the topography.
I shouldn't say unbuildable.
The proposal required that it was, the proposal required that a portion of it was acquired as part of the...
Okay, I'm just trying to get very simplistically as to what amount of additional land is being purchased that is not needed for retention ponds, detention ponds, and the jail. What amount is above that, because that's what seems to be a discussion here as far as what's excess?
There's really, to do the jail and the other layout ideally is most of that property.
No, we've never heard a number of 72 acres, so I'm...
The number that, the number that was equivalent to that is 58 acres. When you heard 40 acres, it's the same as 58 acres.
That's why, that's why I just said, 58 acres, and you...
But that, but that still leaves you with what we had before at 40 acres. You can still do it, but that gives you the vertical jail, it gives you structured parking, and it gives you detention underneath the building.
All I'm trying to get to is how many acres are we buying above our basic needs of all the things you just described? Is it 10 acres, is it 20? Because realistically, this is only, we're arguing about literally probably less than 2% of the cost here. Folks, we're spending a lot of time, that's what I want to get to.
We're in agreement.
But we can't get an answer, Councilman Schron, to the president because it's all double speak.
Too much going on here.
There's too much double speak.
The answer is in some portion of that additional 12 acres.
Okay, so of the total of 750 million, it's less than, it's basically less than the 1.5% of the total cost.
Which is why you should just...
This is why we should be buying all the land. I'm sorry, but, okay, so let's do this.
Well, here's what we're going to do, because again, our time is short, we do need time for executive session, but we do have three additional questions, and Councilman Miller has been gracious enough to hold his questions until our next discussion. So the three that, who I've just read, we want you to take your opportunity, keep your questions brief, concise, allow them to answer, and know that we will continue this conversation, okay? This is not the last time. So again, Councilman Schron, if he has completed, Councilwoman Simon, and then Councilman Sweeney.
Councilman Sweeney could go because I already spoke. I'll go after him and I'll go after Miller.
Okay, you want to pass and go last?
Yeah, I already had my couple of questions.
Feel free, go right ahead, Councilman.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Where do I want to start? Ryan, if you don't mind, just through the chair, the purchase of the property for a dollar amount, it's not to exceed, or is it is the purchase price?
What's proposed is a purchase price. There's a draft contract agreement, in fact, so it's, it's a, it's a set amount that's being proposed.
Through the chair to, is that final? My question is, if the administration gets the authority to do so, could they negotiate not to exceed that, and if it breaks apart, they don't buy it, and if they can get them down, they can? Or is this contract already locked in?
Well, nothing is signed. The county and the executive don't sign real estate agreements until they have a...
Yeah, I know.
Yeah, council vote. And when you say not to exceed, it's not like a construction contract where there would still be things to, you know, price out. The price is what's proposed. I would say that if there was a change in the scope of the contract, then that would be an opportunity, but, you know, what's been discussed with the seller is a certain acreage at a certain price. And there's other terms, considerations, I will say, non-monetary, that they've been very flexible on, that we have mentioned at the prior meeting, that I think are very valuable in terms of, you know, rezoning and participating in the cost of creating the retention ponds, which is a part of the contract that hasn't been really focused on.
We talked about short answers.
Sorry, sir.
And through the chair, I'm just, my point was, we're talking about a dollar amount. And the dollar amount is what is in the legislation.
Yes, sir.
Once the administration, if they get the authority, they have that much money to buy the property if we put a not to exceeds in. If they choose to try to renegotiate with this landowner to lower the property down, is that a possibility?
If the landowner and...
Is that a, yes.
Yeah, if the landowner and the county were in agreement, they could always go down in the number.
Thank you. Or try to go up if they need legislative authority.
Correct.
Okay, thank you on that one. In regards to the, just some questions. Mike, is, remind me how bad that jail is over there?
The jail has challenges. It's a 40-year-old building.
Is it the worst jail in the country like some people tell me?
I wouldn't characterize it as that, and...
Is it in the top 10 worst?
I couldn't put a threshold of where it is compared to other jails.
Okay, just tell me how bad it is.
Obviously, we rely on state inspections to come in to tell us how that facility, condition-wise, and...
Do you think it's...
We've improved things.
Okay, I'm just trying to get to the point of, is it critical that we get the inmates out of that jail as soon as possible because of the condition?
It's critical for us to make a decision in regards to either reinvesting in that facility or building new in the cost for it.
Thank you very much. I was trying to get you to say that. And through the chair, to the exec, or to the executive, these are three separate pieces of legislations that you introduced, right?
That's correct, Councilman.
And you want each one of them voted on?
That's correct. They were submitted simultaneously.
Thank you. And just as my chairman of our safety committee, it's imperative that we make a decision and vote one way or the other. And I know they're all related, but they're all separate, and they could be voted on different ways. So I'm urging my council president to call the vote when the time is appropriate, but as we talk about it and talk about it and talk about it, money keeps rolling, money keeps rolling. And in my opinion, and my preference, and my push, is to have the question called on at least the site, and then we could know which way we want to go. Fix that? Buy that? Go over there, go over there, go over there. The new one came up, Lakeside, we own most of the property down there from 13th to 30th. We can take the homeless shelter and put it in there. I'm like, I didn't even see that on the dot, but I don't, we have a question in front of us right now, and I want to have an opportunity to vote when the time's coming. I like it sooner than later. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman Miller, Councilman Sweeney, and since I called out the name, Councilman Miller, I changed my mind. I want you to ask your brief question as you said.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. President, and I will be very brief. First, I just, I think there's a lot of advantage to obtaining the whole 72 acres. I just think you, you gain so much more flexibility, so many more options, and I think it would be very easy to save five or 10 million on-site acquisition and create operational constraints that you can't fix for 50 or 100 million. So, so I think we, I think we should go with the 72 acres, and I would just add my voice to what Councilman Gallagher and Councilman Sweeney said, that the, the clock is ticking, costs are rising, and I think we have three separate issues in that, that we should, we should try to vote as quickly as possible, and that, that we should, if at all possible, we should vote on at least a site question at the next council meeting. Thank you.
Councilwoman Simon?
Mr. President, I think it would be way out of order for this council to consider purchasing property without a way to fund the construction of a jail. That makes no sense to me, except to force the issue of where a couple of members want this jail to go. So if any order has to be set, it should be how a jail will be built, whether sales tax will be extended. So if we're going to implore the president to make decision, it would make sense first to hear how we're going to fund a jail before we buy a site and acres we don't need. I want to point out to this council that we're asked to purchase property acreage that is not usable at the same market rate as usable property. There's a lot of questions that I have about this site, but I agree with Councilman Gallagher that maybe perhaps we need to consider looking at the site we all had agreed on previously, which is a transport site, and see if we can get consensus about going back there. And Mr. Dever was in favor of that, Mr. Jeffers was in favor of that back then, so I'm sure we're not going to hear strong objection from them if this council decides to go back to the site we all had consensus on purchasing. And lastly, when I keep hearing how this suits our purpose, quote, "It's the center of the county," it's not the center of those who use this facility. It's not. That's a misnomer. It's a tack in the center of a map, but it does not show who uses this. And I'm talking about families, I'm talking about the court, I'm talking about the sheriffs, I'm talking about safety forces off the street, and the people who have to go there. So let's be clear, this is not suiting the purpose for those who use it. It might be convenient to get this expedited, but it's not serving the community that uses it. And I'm going to be able to give data around that and, and show this council that expediency over, you know, what's important to our residents has to be balanced. So please saying this suits our purpose when it does clearly does not, if we're only talking dollars, cents.
All right, statements, a lot briefing and questions. Did you really want, did you want to respond? Okay, the floor is yours.
Sorry, I didn't mean to give a closing, sorry.
That's all right. If you want to respond, please.
We believe it fits the need of this county, and we believe this is the right location, and we are fully in support of trying to move forward the 72.1 acres, and hopefully we'll have council's support to do so. So thank you very much.
All right. Okay, thank you. So at this time, we're going to move on to our executive session. All meetings of the Cuyahoga County Council are open to the public under the Ohio Open Meetings laws. Under that law, council may go into executive session during a meeting for specifically authorized purposes. During executive session, council confers outside of the hearing of the public. Council may not make any decisions about any matters in executive session. All decisions are made in public. This afternoon, the council will go into executive session for the purpose of discussing pending or imminent litigation. During this time, our live stream will be down, and we ask all those not specifically needed for the executive session to remain in council chambers. Council members will convene in the adjacent Committee Room A and will re-enter the meeting once the executive session has ended. Is there a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of discussing pending or imminent litigation?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Madam Clerk, please call the role and a motion to go into executive session.
Mr. Tuma?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher? Mr. Schron?
Yes.
Ms. Conwell? Ms. Turner's absent. Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Ms. Simon? Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Sweeney?
Yes.
Council President Jones?
Yes.
The motion carries.
As have it, we will adjourn the meeting for executive session.
Now back on the record. There any miscellaneous business? If not, if nothing else holds our attention, our committee of the whole meeting is now adjourned.